I will reconvene the June 13, 2022 council meeting to order. Councilman Reiner, will you please lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. This evening, we have some special presentations. This month is Pride Month, and it's the year during the month of June lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, and it is celebrated in honor of the 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City. As a society, we have seen some great social advancements in the past 50 years, and while so much has been accomplished, we must continually move forward in support of traditionally marginalized communities. And Dublin is a community that values diversity, equity, and inclusion for all, and we call for social equity that echoes through this nation. And as the city of Dublin, we're committed to providing those opportunities for our residences, our businesses, and our visitors' voices to be heard. And so, the city has implemented several committees and community liaisons to serve in shaping Dublin as a diverse, inclusive city. I'm proud tonight to have a presentation by Michael Haines concerning Pride Month, and I would ask him to please come to the podium and present his remarks. Welcome, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Michael Haines. I am a member of the Community Inclusion Advisory Committee. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Directors of Rainbow Dublin, and I'm a member of the LGBTQ community. And last night, we held Rainbow Dublin's Second Annual Pride Walk, which started at Riverside Crossing Park, and this was an opportunity to celebrate community, both the LGBTQ community and the challenges which it has overcome so far, and the Dublin community in which we live, work, and love. It was also a time to remember and reflect. It was held on June 12, which is the same date as the Pulse massacre in Florida back in 2016, where 49 people were killed and 53 people were wounded. So, it was definitely an opportunity to see both sides of the reality of the LGBTQ community in the United States of America today. As far as the event itself and the venue, the venue was absolutely fantastic. Riverside Crossing Park is beautiful, and everything about it was great, the pavilion and the large open area, and we were fortunate that the weather basically behaved itself. It was great to have multiple officials and employees from the city present. I saw folks from the city manager's office, including Dana and Kirby. I appreciated Mayor Fox for joining us on short notice to speak. And Chief Paez and Officer McCloskey from the Police Department also spoke, and if you weren't there, I hope that there is some way that you can hear Officer McCloskey's speech, because while everyone's speeches were fantastic, hers was incredibly moving, and I wish I had recorded the whole thing. I appreciate the work that the city did to promote the event. We had over 150 people there despite the threat of rain, which is more than we had last year when the weather was gorgeous. Rebecca Myers did great work there, and I'm glad that as part of some of the communication around Pride Month, we were able to include information about how people can file a complaint under the NDO, which was passed last year, if they believe they were discriminated against. I'm already looking forward to our event next June and having conversations with the city around how we may be able to expand the event and our collaboration with the city. So, for the remainder of the year, there are some other things that Rainbow Dublin will be working on. We'll be doing our annual coming out party in August. That's a community festival and celebration. We held it at Toyota Park last year. We're tentatively planning to do that the second weekend in August, and I need to get a note out to events folks about that. Our website with the document about how to file claims under the nondiscrimination ordinance and other links to community resources is live. That's rainbodublinoh.org, and we're hoping to expand that further during the year. We're going to be working on partnering, as we already have to some extent, with organizations across central Ohio, so we can leverage lessons learned and find ways to help each other out as community. And potentially, we'll be creating and hosting some educational workshops, but as we're already halfway through the year, that may be a bit of a stretch goal. I'd like to also work on some more informational flyers. I know someone, and it might have even been the mayor, but I don't remember at this point, had suggested to me a while back an introductory resource regarding pronouns, and I think that could be a good thing to provide. And if we do develop resources such as those, I hope that the city would be able to continue to provide assistance in helping get those out to people who could benefit from them, because I really think the more information that we can get out to all residents of the city, the better. One other thing, and here I'm thinking more with my kayak hat on than my Rainbow Dublin hat, as an opportunity for further discussion, is the schools. And I understand that Dublin City Schools is a separate entity which serves multiple communities, but there's truly a stark difference between the way I'm seeing the city of Dublin embracing DEI and the continual pushback that is happening within our schools. As we're meeting here, and not even 24 hours after the city's Pride Walk, the school board is going to be voting on a new course description, or sorry, on new course descriptions, one of which, and here we're talking about a high school elective class, so this is for people who are about to be heading off to college. It's a women's studies course, and the course description was intentionally scrubbed of a reference to the LGBTQ community between its first reading and tonight's second reading. So, to me, that's just a stark difference between what's happening there with that organization and what's happening here with the city. And to be clear, there are challenges in the schools beyond just LGBTQ matters as far as DEI. There were some questions around books that were polled earlier in the year, and while I don't know all the details, those covered a myriad of topics, including racial justice. So, interestingly, as part of the superintendent's Diversity Committee report, there is a reference to that committee having mentioned trying to partner with the city. I don't have any context there, but I see the great work that the city is doing and the work we're doing with Kayak, and I do think there may be an opportunity there to be a partner in helping the schools figure out how they can best address these issues that are of significant importance to Dublin residents who are students, or teachers, or parents, or staff of the schools. So, if we have opportunities to help DCS improve its DEI posture, I'd love to see the city explore those through kayak or any other means. In closing, you only have to look at the news to know that there are challenging events going on for LGBTQ folks across the country, and especially those who experience intersectional identities. I'm grateful that the city of Dublin is speaking loudly and proudly in support of our community, and I look forward to continuing to work with you all for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And thank you for Rainbow Dublin being a liaison to make sure those partnerships are successful. Next, on our special presentations, we will have some remarks concerning Juneteenth. For those who are learning about Juneteenth, 2022 marks the second year Juneteenth has been recognized as a federal holiday, and the city of Dublin also recognizes this as a holiday for their employees. A little reference, historical reference, June 19, 1865 was the day when enslaved African-Americans in Galveston, Texas were told the news of the abolition of slavery by Union soldiers more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. Juneteenth is also known as Freedom Day, and on this day, many families will gather to share food, music, and many traditions, and it's also a time for us to celebrate about Black excellence in our community and uplift Black and African-American voices. The city will honor the holiday with a Juneteenth commemoration and celebration and a walk across the Dublin Link pedestrian bridge on June 19, starting at 8:45 PM at the Riverside Crossing Park. The event hosts this year are the Community Inclusion Advisory Committee, People Like Me, and the city of Dublin. And the speakers will be Community Inclusion Advisory Committee leadership, and we have one here tonight, Imran Malik, People Like Me representative, and city leadership, and attendees will cross the bridge together from the park toward the West Plaza in a unity walk. I would like to introduce Imran Malik, who will be speaking on behalf of Kayak, our Community Inclusion Advisory Committee, about Juneteenth. Imran?
Honorable council leaders, city manager, city staff, and my fellow Dublin Irish citizens, a very cordial good evening and peace be with you all. My name is Imran Malik, and I'm the newly elected or selected or appointed leader of Kayak, the Community Inclusion Advisory Committee that is appointed by the leadership of our council of the city of Dublin, with the vision that we will work to bring the representation of all diversities that exist in our social ecology and cultural communities of Dublin, Ohio. The mission is to also enhance the living experiences of diversity, equity, and inclusion for all our residents, and this no other way but to do it together by mutual collaboration, participation, and engagement. While I stand here in those capacities in front of you today, I've also served previously as a member of the chief's advisory committee of our Dublin Chief Police, Justin Paez's group as well, and that was an opportunity for me to learn more about the various diversities and the enrichment opportunities that exist in our Dublin city that we can bring forward to work together and move forward together and stronger. While I stand here in those capacities, I also want to let everybody know that I'm standing here as a father, as a husband, as an interfaith leader, a community member, and a proud Dublin Irish resident as well, because to me, the Dublin Irish values mean a lot, and our values are basically what reflect our characteristics as a city and a community as well. Dear all, I believe, before I get to the comments for the evening, I would like to take this opportunity to say my kudos and gratifying appreciation for our city's leadership's vision and mission to continuously work together to bring people together. We are living the living model of a catalyst community that appreciates all its social fabric, and we are moving forward together in resilience and in perseverance. Our city's leadership has taken the right steps. They have proactively appointed the initiation or the mission and vision of CAC, which is the Community Advisory, Chief's Advisory Commission, under Chief Justin Paez's leadership, and then the newly appointed CIAC that I am part of, and my pre-speaker, Michael Haines, who talked about the Pride event, he's also a member, as well as Peggy Kilty, who is sitting right next to Michael as well. Our mission on this initiative is to explore all opportunities of how we can work together and continue to build the way for a very inclusive and cohesive Dublin Irish ecology for all our residents. My brothers and sisters and my fellow residents who are sitting here today, it will be my pleasure to lead this initiative of Kayak and then continue to not only add value, but also bring value by a two-way communication, and that is the envisioning of our leadership here at the council, and I'm very humbly and cordially appreciative of their initiative to continuously think about, thinking outside the box, how to add value to our living experiences in Dublin city. Last night, as many of us gathered at the Dublin Link to celebrate and support the lighting of the link with the pride colors, it brought the message home to all of us that we are big human, we are one big human family, and our city and its leadership is leading the way continuously in making Dublin a welcoming city with the mission to move forward stronger together. I would like to especially call out our mayor Jane Fox, our city manager Dana McDaniel, our chief of police Justin Paez, and the city staff Kirby Dirck, Rebecca Myers, and Dublin PD Officer Rebecca McCloskey for their remarks and their presence at the event last night. Unfortunately, yesterday's event was also the anniversary of our nation's second largest shooting that happened at the Pulse massacre, and it was a reminder for all of us in presence that there's a lot of work that needs to be done by all of us, and this is only going to happen when we move forward together and collectively. My brothers and sisters, last night's presence, as Michael mentioned, it was a sentiment that was shown that there's no space for hate in our city, and thank you again to our leadership for continuously being that catalyst to bridge building and bringing people together. I also want to take a quick second to say my gratification and my gratitude to my friend Bobby Weston, Michael Haines, Peggy Kilty, Jerome Terry, Rose Hanks, and Ms. Young for continuously bringing the awareness of pride community and LGBTQ plus communities, you know, concerns and their plight to our attention so we can focus on everybody's, you know, health, mental health, as well as, you know, moving forward together. Dear all, one such another event and commemoration of bringing all of us together will be hosted in honor on June 19 at 8:30 PM again at the Dublin Link. This will be our second annual event to commemorate the Juneteenth event. The Community Inclusion and Advisory Committee is sponsoring this event along with People Like Me project, which believes in offering evidence-based education and prevention services to the community's youth and adult alike. It believes in building thriving communities by transforming lives. Dear all, the bridge will be lit with the colors of Juneteenth and the Pan-African flags in effort to be as inclusive as possible, based on the recommendations as received from the consensus of the Kayak team as well as the city staff. The Dublin Link will be lit with these colors for two days in a row, 19th and the 20th of June. It is my utmost pleasure, and on behalf of the Kayak team, I cordially invite all members of the council, as well as our public safety leadership, as well as our residents, to please attend this event and show our support and cordiality, you know, for Juneteenth event and commemoration. As mentioned earlier, our strength as an ecology lies in our values, and the strength of our values is proven when we see all humans through, all humans through the lens of inclusion and without any colors or biases. Our Dublin Irish values have always led the way in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and this essence and attribute is contagious as we continue to lead the way in central Ohio and beyond. Thank you all for allowing me this time and opportunity to speak to you all today. God bless America and its beautiful people always. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Imran. And just to be sure, we'll make sure that you understand that the communications and our public information staff will share the history of the holiday with our residents and ways to commemorate and honor Juneteenth, and you'll see that on social media and on our website, and we appreciate that effort, and thank you so much. And last evening was a wonderful event, and I know Juneteenth will be another event that we can be proud of as a city. So, thank you again for representing Kayak so well. Our next special presentation this evening is an update from Kim Shar about Link Us. Welcome, Kim.
Mayor Fox and council, thank you for having us. Kimberly Sharp, I'm Senior Director of Development with Cota, and with me tonight is Elliot Lewis, Senior Planner with Morpsy and Justin Goodwin with the city of Columbus, and he's serving as the project manager for the Northwest Corridor Rapid Transit, Rapid Transit Corridor. So, thank you for having us tonight. We are here to talk about details of Link Us and how we're moving into an action plan. So, with that, thank you, Jeanne, for doing the slides. I appreciate it. We want to note that we're really building upon a lot of good work, a lot of planning work that's come before us, and all the communities have been involved, starting in 2014 with Insight 2050, really a different way to build and plan, and Dublin has exemplified this with Bridge Park. Next Gen, Cota's Long Range Plan, which really outlined more than 14 rapid transit corridors and understanding how the region could be connected differently, and then on to Insight 2050, the corridor concepts, and that's really the first time marrying land use concepts with mobility concepts came into play and how we could do this. So, while Link Us is really about the action plan built upon all these planning documents, where we are now is how to get to implementation. We're moving into implementation, and we're working with the 26 cities and 17 townships in the Cota service area to spend time understanding your mobility priorities and how we can truly connect the region. The next slide, through Link Us, our region can address our most important current and future challenges and grow our competitive advantages. With these goals together, moving our region forward and to remain competitive in the nation and globally. Next slide. In short, Link Us is really all of us working together. It is about the mobility infrastructure. It's about the type of communities we're building and how this increases opportunities for all. Next slide. Why Link Us and why now? We know our region is growing. We're one of the few in the Midwest that's seen such growth. The 2020 census results shows that we're growing exponentially, and we know with a lot of the job growth, Dublin being one of the large job centers in the region, there's some other large job centers. How do you truly connect the workforce to the jobs, the students to the education, and the residents to where they need to go? We want to be proactive, not reactive. We've seen some of the largest metropolitan areas that have truly exploded with growth, and they're reacting in a way that's really challenging, and we want to do the opposite. We want to be proactive. So, with that, we're going to go through a few slides that just visually outlines growth over the years, from 1950 to sort of what we see locally now. We really see the central Ohio region spreading out and connecting and job growth, et cetera. This is results from the 2020 census, showing the growth is over 13%, and you can see some of the cities that have grown the most in the past 10 years, and those truly represent the job centers. So, what we want to talk about tonight is how to connect these areas of growth with mobility to really move people quickly outside of single occupancy vehicles. So, with that, we really want to visualize a new way to get around, something we don't have right now, and that is rapid transit. Right now, we have three, I know I had mentioned Next Gen had 14 corridors. We know there's five to eight corridors that would really be impactful with the region. There are three currently under preliminary analysis and engineering, that being the Northwest Corridor, the East Main Corridor, and the West Broad Street Corridor. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the Northwest Corridor and where we are in the process. The locally preferred alternative, you see the line here from downtown to OU in Dublin. Downtown will be via Spring and Long, this is preliminary, where you are less than 10% design, and for those familiar with engineering and architectural drawings, that's just in the beginning, it's called concepts. You're trying to understand how this really all fits together, and there's a lot of analysis going on. To Olentangie River Road North, then Bethel to Sawmill to Bridge Park and ending in the OU campus area of Dublin. This is where we're recommending this be the locally preferred alternative, that is a specific term used by the Federal Transit Administration that will be on the books. So, the initial segment, the recommended initial segment, really connects the activity centers that connects the region to Ohio Health, OSU, OSU Hospitals, Batel, downtown, and all the major stadiums. The proposed initial segment covers two-thirds of the forecasted ridership in the full locally preferred alternative corridor. So, this represents two-thirds of all the riders in the whole full corridor, and there's other connections that we're making sure are very clear, future Cota connections east-west, as well as specific first mile, last mile connections. So, the next slide is what we want to spend just a minute on, and it's looking at what we're considering as phases, and we're recommending these phases for very specific reasons. The federal government, to go into partnership with the federal government to fund a multi-hundreds of millions of dollars for infrastructure investment, there's very specific things they need to see and understand, and that is, number one, the ridership, what you're connecting, and the propensity for growth and support of the system. So, with that, Phase One currently does support the ridership numbers that the federal government expects as you go into that type of agreement with them. So, for Phase One... So for Phase One, we're around 10% design. And the cost and performance numbers are being refined as we speak, and that will be shared with the team. The annual ridership for this segment is estimated at 1.2 million rides per year. And the ridership forecast will continue. The project cost currently is estimated at 140 to 175 million for this initial phase. The cost assumptions are for the major infrastructure of the bus rapid transit lanes that end at Thomas, minimal cost of some specific intersection improvements. But we know that with more refinement, we'll get better cost estimates. And we're going to talk a little bit about Phase Two here in a minute. One thing, we have a staff meeting scheduled between Cota, Morpsy, our project manager, and Dublin staff later on in July to focus on the phasing and funding approaches for all the phases and to understand how one, two, and three work consecutively and/or congruently. And more information will be coming back to you after that work session. So just pointing out that even with one phase, this is a multi-multi-year process, a couple of years in project development, where you're really refining those designs, getting much better cost estimates and entering. We have to enter a federal agreement with the FTA on that grant agreement. At the same time, we'll be working together with all the partners to probably explore other avenues of funding streams from both locally and at the state and federal level. Phase Two is concurrently at the moment running with the locally preferred alternative segment. But we must work again within those federal, the Federal Transit Administration's parameters of growth and ridership numbers. And I can take any questions at the end or now, but let's get through this and happy to take questions. What you have before you, did they get a copy? Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you. What you have before you is a report from the Linkus Steering Committee to the community at large on recommendations on how to move Linkus forward in the region of central Ohio. And it's pretty in-depth. It's 85 pages. There is an executive summary that's a few pages. And this is really about the why, the how, how much, when, and who. And it's really important to note that everybody within this region is a part of this, and we have to do this together. This is not one entity, and this is not one community, but it's all of us. So think, next slide, thank you. So Linkus really is thinking big, and it's more than just transit. Transit is the backbone, but it also includes other service enhancements, bikeways, greenways, sidewalks, specific roadway improvements along transit routes. The focus is how to move the needle in moving our community faster and more sustainably. So through a fairly conservative financial model, developed with the same consultants that the City of Austin and Cat Metro in Austin utilized to understand their larger package. But through that conservative financial model, we believe the potential program can deliver by 2030 three high-capacity rapid transit corridors, 380 million and transit supportive infrastructure, and we'll talk about that in a minute, eight new Cota Plus zones, 15% increase in fixed route service hours, 150 million for transit-oriented development, 4.7 million for shelter expansions, et cetera. And we believe by 2050, it'll be, of course, even more, adding on to that. But this can only happen, as we'll talk about in a minute, with a local, sustainable local funding source. What it costs, we have line items for those larger buckets I just described. The highest cost being the high-capacity rapid transit corridors, as the next highest cost being the transit supportive infrastructure. That line item will be infrastructure incorporated every year through a mechanism we'll talk about in a minute. That sounds like a lot of money, but we'll be utilizing Morpsy to help us administer that and to share with the community at large for the communities within the Cota service area to really build that infrastructure to connect to the transit spine, as well as to connect the region. And we're going to look at some maps in a minute. Where the funding would come from? This is assuming adding a new half a percent Cota sales tax to the existing half a percent sales tax. Within the state of Ohio, state statute allows regional transit authorities to utilize up to 1% of the sales tax towards the system. That would be leveraged to secure at least 650 million in federal funding. That's what, that is what is in the current financial model. We are expecting, of course, to secure other federal funding. And this is consistent with investment levels in other regions. Where will the transit supportive infrastructure dollars go? 26 cities, 17 townships, what we talked about, all jurisdictions in the Cota service area would be eligible. And we are designing a process with the communities to be administered by Morpsy to allocate the transit supportive infrastructure funds for sidewalks, trails, transit supportive roadway improvements. The first workshop with all of the cities was held on June 10th. And Morpsy hosted those. And the next set, I believe, is mid-July. And that's really outlining what does this committee look like? How, what does the process, how does the process work? And how are we really going to work together to build that system to connect? Comparing to other regional transit authorities, Cota is currently at 0.5%. The Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority is currently at 1%, and Sorda is at 0.8%. The transit system vision, the transit portion is looking at corridors, more increased fixed route service, which is hours, time, lines, better connections, an increase in those, as well as, I think the next slide highlights Cota Plus zones. These are your first mile, last mile connections. We have three zones currently out there, and more zones would be added. The transit supportive infrastructure is looking at the trail. This really uses the cog, the Central Ohio Greenways Program as the basis for connecting the bikeways. That includes both on-street bikeways as well as trail connections. And then this last part, the funded program for sidewalk, really filling in those sidewalk gaps to connect people. Nobody really likes the Cota sign in a ditch with no sidewalk. That's really not very accessible to anybody. So we agree that needs to be connected. Again, this is before you. What you'll find are the recommendations is to champion the transformative infrastructure investment, to align the capital budgets. Make sure I'm on the right page. To provide sustainable funding for Linkus, and that is laid out how? To advocate for regional prosperity outcomes. To create a regional transit-oriented development strategy. To designate a leadership committee to oversee the allocation of the transit supportive infrastructure funding, and that would be through Morpsy. And what we probably want to talk about is the significance for Dublin. The Northwest Corridor, Rapid Transit Corridor, let me make sure I have the right notes. So in the F, in the FTA's eyes, the locally preferred alternative, of course, is from downtown to OU in Dublin. That's all three phases will be submitted to the federal government. What is wonderful is when, when that is submitted and accepted and we request to move on into project development for Phase One, what you'll see is that locally preferred alternative in its entirety will be published on the federal website. And that's really, really good to see. We are going to work with staff to understand Phase Two. Timing, what do it take? Can it run concurrent? And subsequently, how could it run closely and move forward? We need to lay all that out, what the feds expect of us, locally what it would take, and we're going to work on those schedules together. At the same time, I do want to note we are elevating the discussions of 161 and the importance of it to connect these major job centers with lots of pockets of workforce in between and on the outside. And that's something we're going to continue to work with ODOT, the Franklin County Engineers Office, and all the municipalities along 161. On, and Morpsy again is helping with that discussion. The Cota Plus zones, we know that Dublin has been working with us closely on the potential of a Cota Plus zone for some time. And that is definitely on the list. The bus network enhancements, 33, 73 are currently here. And that would be analyzed with staff to understand how that could work better and connect better. The greenway connections, we know that there's the extension of the Emerald Greenway, the Heritage Trail, as well as other bicycle, multi-use trail connections to the surrounding areas, as well as access to the transit supportive infrastructure fund to make those type of connections and other improvements as put forward by staff. So what's next? The Cota Board of Trustees will decide in July whether to put the sales tax on an upcoming ballot. The Federal Transit Administration also considers community support when evaluating high-capacity transit corridors seeking federal funds. And this is just one step in a multi-year process. We're committed to ongoing engagement with you and your residents. And we look forward to speaking with you as much as you'll have us to work out details. With that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Questions? I think you had one. Kathy, did you have a question?
Kim, thank you very much, and thank you for all the work on this. This is, as you said, a long-term visionary process, and I appreciate that so much. I just had a couple of questions. Because this is such a long-term vision, how are you thinking about incorporating sort of futuristic mobility types things, autonomous vehicles, other approaches in this? And your thoughts on that? And I very much appreciate the conversations of looking at the sort of east-west connections. This, as you said, it's very north-south in its design. So thank you for doing sort of thoughts on how that would be incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeRosa. Great questions. So to get to a financial model, we had to develop what we felt was a program that made sense. If we were to implement all of the items in Next Gen, which went through a lot of discussion analysis, that was a lot. We had to kind of focus on what would really connect the region and what would help move the needle. So with that, our team focused on those specific connections. And we included a line item called Emerging Technologies, because you just don't know. We don't know in five years what those things will look like. But we made sure we included a line item in the budget for that so we can explore those as we move forward. And your second question regarding the east-west connections?
Yeah, just your thoughts on that. You mentioned the 161 leveraging that.
The thought is, when we worked on these initial maps four, five, six years ago, I think we know that the job centers are shifting, especially post-pandemic. And it's not truly post-pandemic yet, but you know what I'm saying. The job centers have shifted, and we really need to kind of rethink the going, comings and goings of the workforce. And that is shifting. So with that, the east-west connections seem to be arising as some important connections to make.
And I would only make one other comment, and thank you. I know when you were here for resident in involvement in QNA, I think we were first on the list. I think I happened to attend that meeting. And I know a lot of work has happened since then, and a lot of things have been turned up. So I sincerely appreciate your offer for further connectivity because I think residents that are interested, I think, I think there's just been a lot of development since that initial meeting. So some consideration for, for ways to involve the residents sort of at this phase. I would appreciate that. And I know we've had an opportunity to discuss that. And I heard your offer to be everywhere, but I think that would be very helpful. So thank you for that.
Very good cue, if I may say. First of all, thank you for hosting the first round of the Northwest Corridor Public Meetings in March and April. And a special thank you to JM Rayburn for helping to coordinate that. We do have some upcoming Linkus informational meetings. The Northwest Corridor Public Informational Meeting in person will be June 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 in the evening at the Simon Kenton Boy Scouts of America facility at 807 Keneer Road. That's June 23rd in person. There's also a set of virtual meetings scheduled for Wednesday, June 29th, one from noon to 1:30, and one from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And then we'll certainly work with Dublin's comm staff to notify your residents of these upcoming meetings.
Kim, could you send us a copy of your presentation? It was all moving so fast, I couldn't follow all the maps, the bicycles, the walks, the, you know, I, I need time to digest it all and think about it. Thank you.
I just appreciate the thought of the greenways. And I think that particularly in this community, celebrating those is going to be key to support of our residents. That's something that's really valued here. I think the coordination with the Rapid Five in Linkus and marrying those two together are going to speak volumes because I think that's one of the things that our residents are particularly interested in. And I think the last thing that will be important to celebrate is how the construction of these dedicated rapid transit systems will happen. And to Kathy's point regarding autonomous vehicles and things, that these are going to be built as smart streets. And so it's going to likely be the first place that autonomous vehicles would travel in those spaces apart from the general population traffic. So I think those details are going to be important to folks to understand they're built, it's really building the roadways of the future. It happens to help us with our transit because we cannot build our way out of the population growth that's going to happen. It simply can't be done. So we're going to have to figure out a way to move people around differently. So those would be the things I think that would resonate most with this community. And I really appreciate you highlighting them and continuing to highlight.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Dana?
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick. First, I want to thank Kim and the team as well for working with us and working with staff. And as she mentioned, we've got a follow-on meeting with staff. And I would anticipate that this group will come back to council yet again, probably in the August timeframe for another discussion on this topic. So just so you're aware of that. Thank you.
And also, Kimberly, you know, I agree with Councilman Amros Grooms. I think this community embraces innovation and convenience, but they also embrace an aesthetic that, that gives a timelessness to the community that doesn't change it just for a function, a practicality of movement. So I think we are all looking at how you bridge beautiful greenways, good multimodal streets with rapid transit and not change the character of a community so much that it becomes unrecognizable. Those are really important elements here. I think council would, you know, would be interested in talking about. And so we appreciate you working with staff on this because this could create a great opportunity for wonderful transportation changes. But with that also comes some consequences that might be unpredictable. So, so thank you so very much for the update. At this time in the meeting, we have an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a comment or have any comments been received online?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading, Public Hearing Ordinance Number 20-22.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments, specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Toll's Career and Technical Center.
Our staff report this evening is Matt Stifler, Director of Finance. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. There are no changes to this ordinance from the first hearing, and staff recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Thank you. Counsel, any questions or discussions? Hearing none. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-22.
Adopting the proposed tax budget for fiscal year 2023.
Staff report again is Matt Stifler.
Once again, counsel, there are no changes to this document. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Hearing none. Counsel, any questions? Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-22.
Amending the annual appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022.
Matt?
Yes, thank you, council members. There are no changes to this ordinance, but I wanted to make clear that at the May 9 meeting of council, when we discussed this, we mentioned that we would be signing memorandums of understanding with the organizations that we intended to appropriate this funding to, and I just wanted to get on the record that that is our intent, subject to the instructions that we received from council at the retreat and all the subsequent meetings that we had. So as we engage with these organizations that have matching fund requirements, we'll be making those documents, you know, part of the record and part of the transaction.
Thank you. Public comment, none. Counsel, any questions? Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-22.
Amendment to zoning code section 153.999 to update the penalty code regarding demolition of historic structures.
Our staff report tonight is Sarah Holt from Planning. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. All the requested updates from the first reading have been made and incorporated into the text, and we are requesting approval tonight.
Thank you. Do we have public comment on this? No. Counsel, are there questions? I have one, and maybe this is something that Councilman Cram can help verify. At the last meeting, we talked about using the word "objects" in the reading. And so my question is, is there a more definitive way to describe the objects that are of historical significance, so that there's no confusion in the code that an object might mean any object on a residential or commercial building? Because you mentioned that they would be like a hitching post or a... So how would one determine the difference?
I had some email correspondence with the law office this week. Thaddeus had contacted me and asked if those definitions exist, and they do, they're in the federal codes. I sent him the federal code that defines building structure sites and objects. So as long as he's comfortable with that, I mean, I'm fine the way it's written. I gave him the fact that those definitions do exist.
Yeah, can we just verify that that change was made? I guess...
It's in, objects has been added.
A new objects has been added. Is there...
He just wanted to make sure definitions existed, and I gave him the code that those exist.
Right, exactly. When I spoke to him, he said he thought it was important not to actually put those in the code, because those could change over time, and because this is a common historical kind of term and use and industry standard, we should just be able to direct to that federal guidelines when we're interpreting it.
I appreciate that explanation, and I'm sure that that would be one when it was answered. I think my concern was to be sure that our residents and our commercial owners understood what objects meant. And there won't be a definition, though, in the code that describes it, but will there be a reference to the federal historic preservation guidelines on the definition of objects?
You know, perhaps a way we could handle that without incorporating it into the code is when staff, I think you're developing different communication materials to... We have a link that Councilmember Cram provided, and we can include that in the communication materials.
I think it is important, because we want so much for compliance, but a true understanding, so it's not difficult to find out what it is you're allowed to do in the historic district and what you're not. I appreciate that. We are, let's see, I've lost my place here. We are ready to call roll. Is that correct? Thank you.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Introduction, first reading of our public hearing ordinance, ordinance number 24-22. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an infrastructure agreement with EG Retail America LLC for the Turkey Hill project.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our staff report is Paul Hammer Smith. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. EG Retail America is the developer of the Turkey Hill project, which is the improvement of approximately 5.5 acres of land at the southwest corner of Shire Rings Road and Avery Road intersection, and they're developing a gas station with a car wash and a new drive-through restaurant in conjunction with a convenience store. The Turkey Hill project is subject to City of Dublin and City of Columbus standards that requires public sanitary sewer be extended through the site to surrounding properties to accommodate sanitary sewer service to any upstream tributary area. The University Boulevard Phase 2 project included the construction of the public sanitary sewer extension along the Turkey Hill site, Avery Road frontage that would have otherwise been the responsibility of the Turkey Hill project to construct. As a condition of the development of the Turkey Hill site and as a condition of approval, the developer is required to reimburse Dublin through an infrastructure agreement for the actual cost of the sanitary sewer extension along that Avery Road site or frontage. The infrastructure agreement is the mechanism for EG Retail America LLC to satisfy their commitment to provide financial reimbursement to Dublin in the amount of $34,702, which represents the actual cost of the public sanitary sewer extension along the site's Avery Road frontage. The City of Dublin does not have any financial obligations under the infrastructure agreement. Lastly, EG Retail America LLC will provide or will make a good faith effort to reimburse Dublin prior to building occupancy, but no later than September 1, 2022. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 24-22, authorizing the city manager to enter into the infrastructure agreement with EG Retail America LLC at the second reading public hearing on June 27, 2022. I am happy to answer any questions from council.
Do we have any public comment on this? No. Are there any questions for Paul? None? Well, as you said, the second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the June 27 meeting. Thank you. I will make a motion to waive council rules in order to consider ordinances 25-22, 26 through 22, and 27-22 together. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-22.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire certain property located at Shawan Falls Drive, identified as Franklin County parcel number 27300079700 from Ohio Health Corporation and Ohio nonprofit corporation for the public purpose of replacing Shawan Falls Drive Bridge, which shall be open to the public without charge. Ordinance 2622 is regarding a property located on Shawan Falls Drive, identified Franklin County parcel numbers 2730078500 and 273700078600 from 220 West Bridge Street LLC. And ordinance 2722 regarding a property located on Shawan Falls Drive, identified Franklin County parcel number 27300248500 from Biscar Properties LLC.
I'll introduce them.
Thank you. Our staff report, once again, is Paul Hammer Smith.
This project is depicted on the project location map. Will provide for the replacement of the existing Shawan Falls Drive Bridge that is presently structurally deficient. The new structure will be a three-lane bridge with a sidewalk, and I do want to highlight that the sidewalk will be on the west side of Shawan Falls Drive, extending from Bridge Street, going north over to the property line with the post office, and then there will be a crossing across Shawan Falls Drive over to the Indian Run Falls Park. So that'll be a component of the project. And then in addition to the new structure, the project includes the replacement of the existing traffic signal at the West Bridge Street-Shawan Falls Drive-Corbin's Mill Drive intersection with a traffic signal mast arms consistent with the Bridge Street design guidelines. Acquisition of property interest from three property owners along the east and west sides of Shawan Falls Drive is necessary to construct the project. These ordinances will provide for three acquisitions of property from Ohio Health Corporation, 220 West Bridge Street LLC, Biscar Properties LLC, as defined and detailed in the staff report. The city has participated in good-faith discussions with all property owners and has arrived at mutually agreeable terms with all property owners, agreeing to the appraised value for compensation. The project is currently being advertised for bid, with the resolution for bid acceptance being anticipated for presentation at council's July 25, 2022 meeting. Once a construction contract is executed, construction activities are expected to commence this year and be complete in 2023. These ordinances authorize the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documents and contracts to formally acquire the necessary property interest. Staff recommends adoption of these three ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on June 27, 2022. I'll be glad to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have any comments? Counsel? Questions for Paul?
Paul, can you highlight why the decision was made to put the pedestrian walkway on the west side of the street? Is the grade change too significant at the corner of Shawan Falls and West Bridge Street to have it on the east side?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of a grade difference, but probably the bigger problem is, is the South Fork Indian Run comes underneath Shawan Falls Drive. It extends north right along that east side of Shawan Falls Drive. There really just is not sufficient room without moving the roadway to provide for that walkway.
That's too bad, because I feel like most of your pedestrian entrance will come from, you know, they'll be headed west or from the east side of Shawan Falls, and so you're essentially asking for two additional street crossings for someone to access the historic log cabin and things like that. There's just no way to get it on the east side.
We looked at that extensively, and we don't disagree with your viewpoint, but unfortunately, it just was not an easy way to build it along that east side.
Good enough, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy?
Paul, as someone who rides this quite a bit, I ride to the post office, and it's a little scary endeavor when you make that right, and so I applaud very much the addition of the sidewalk in that middle lane. I think this will really be fabulous. I am curious as to why the sidewalk sort of ends and doesn't find its way to the post office? And then I have another question after that. Thank you.
The difficulty is, is working with the federal government on their lands.
What?
Yes, acquiring property. So we thought about just going out at midnight and paving it and then see if anybody noticed the next day. But having been through that experience previously with the post office down in Emerald Parkway, when we improved Emerald Parkway at that time, it's a long process, and we felt we really just didn't have the time with the project currently. We haven't necessarily given up on that, but there just wasn't the opportunity to provide it in with this project at this time, so...
So I just put a plug-in for keep plugging on that, because it is dangerous, and, you know, the cars that are coming in and coming out. So if at some point, I would applaud that. And the second thing, bike racks and bike parking as a part of this, those are hard to find, so I don't know if there's going to be additional ones or something, so at least then you could park and find your way into the post office or whatever in addition to the Indian Run Falls or the... And maybe it's on there, I just don't see it.
We had not included that specifically in the project, but we can certainly talk about that.
Because people...
Are you thinking more in the park?
Yeah, I think that would be sufficient, certainly, and then you could... But if you build it, they will bike, I think.
Right.
And I think it would be a nice thing to do, because they really do. We were talking about greenways earlier, and I think this is a lovely and important piece of connectivity, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
We can have that conversation with our park staff.
Paul, is it a sidewalk or a shared-use path?
This will be a sidewalk.
Did you think about one way or the other, a shared-use path, since it's easier to bike, a shared-use path?
We did. Just the difficulty was the amount of acquisition through here and trying to work with the existing parking lots, and I guess not to be too onerous on their property. So that additional width was going to be somewhat problematic along that west side.
So will this be a four-foot sidewalk?
I think it's going to be, what, is it four foot? Okay.
Four foot? Okay. All right, well, a sidewalk is better than nothing, right?
It's kind of where we were at, that better not having the connection at all.
Yeah, especially since the cabin and all that is starting to get a lot of attention. It's just, that's just a difficult place to try to walk to.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The second reading on this and public hearing is scheduled for the June 27 meeting. So introduction and public hearing, vote on resolutions, resolution 27-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2022 sidewalk maintenance program.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our staff report is Brian Gabel. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Excuse me. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the annual sidewalk maintenance program fiscal year 2022. On May 25, 2022, three bids were received and publicly opened by engineering staff. This program is funded from the 2022 through 2026 capital improvement program in the amount of $250,000 for the annual sidewalk maintenance program. It's important to note, this project is over the budgeted funds by $71,020. Engineering consulted with finance and staff anticipates being able to cover the additional program costs using other unencumbered budgeted funds. Regarding trees, each site is unique and reviewed by engineering and forestry staff for tree conflicts, which involves analyzing actual root impacts prior to any cutting. Staff communicates impacts to the residents where the tree is located. For trees that may require removal, staff began offering sidewalk meandering to the affected owners in 2022... Or, excuse me, 2021. Should the owner not desire meandering, some testing can be done by staff prior to removing the trees after the affected roots have been trimmed. As always, our goal is to preserve trees wherever and wherever possible. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Strawser Pavement Company, Inc., in the amount of $291,020 for this program. I will do my best to address any questions council might have about this resolution.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any public comment on this? None? Counsel, questions?
I just had one quick question. Can you explain what did we err on our estimate? Why did we, why were we off so much? We were off by $65,000.
Yeah, that's a good question. So there was an error in the cost calculation for the overall sidewalk costs. The estimated price was not appropriately adjusted for the quantity of repairs within the project itself. So we had more repairs than last year, and the price did not reflect some of our bid costs from previous years. So we made that adjustment, and it actually made the submitted bids make a lot more sense for what we received.
So we just underestimated the surface area pretty much that we needed to do?
But we have the correct surface area. We were off on the estimated cost per square yard.
Oh, okay.
So sidewalk shaving, you know, is a really important aspect, because I hate to see our trees go down. And did I understand that the homeowner has the right to tell us whether they want the tree taken down or not? He has a choice in that, or she has a choice in that, or...
We try to provide a choice, so it's essentially that once a tree... So the sidewalk is removed, we expose all the roots. Once we recognize that there are too many roots to be removed in order to maintain the life of the tree, we approach the owners and speak with them and try to see if any of them want to review the options to be able to meander the sidewalk from that point. So staff has already gone through all these sites and identified some trees, and we've initiated some conversations with the current owners, but we won't actually know true impacts until we get to, you know, remove the sidewalk and actually look at the root structure itself. So, but yes, the residents are given an option. If they want to meander, we can try to approach that and move forward. If they do not want to meander, then the tree will likely be removed. But as I said, we're going forward, we have the ability now to perform some additional testing on the trees. In the past, we would have just removed it. Now we're going to do a little bit more testing on the roots to ensure its structural capacity before removing it.
Is there a program, then, to replace the trees if, once we remove the tree?
Yeah, we work with Parks Department and Streets and be able to replace these trees once they've been removed.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's important, too, for the public to understand that the city has taken on the responsibility of maintaining our sidewalks, which is quite an amenity here, and it's... Is this our second or third year that we've done this now?
The meandering?
No, no, the sidewalk maintenance. This is, are we into our second? I think it's our second year. Is it more than that?
I was going to say, we've done this many years now.
The entire time?
Yeah, yeah. So the meandering was something we reinitiated last year as an option for residents that desire to keep their trees.
Right. And many cities don't take care of the sidewalks. They're usually a property owner's responsibility. But I think it's important to notice, to note that we're spending money on maintaining these sidewalks and doing whatever because we have some, some tree huggers even among us that don't want to see the trees come down. So, all right, thank you for that report.
I appreciate the addition of a root barrier, that biodome. I think that's important, and I would like to see that carried over into our construction requirements, too. You know, when new sidewalks are being installed by a developer, I think it's, it would be appropriate for, to require that so that the, we have less conflicts in the future. And we, you know, so, so often the tree scape is really what makes the street scape and anything that we can do to preserve that and lengthen the lifespan of those trees, I think is worth doing. So thanks for putting the root barrier addition in there. And I'd like to see that into, make its way into our code in general in terms of construction of new facilities.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for the team. I noted that there were six trees removed last year as part of this process, and I know there's been such an effort because it was a larger number when I got on council a while ago. So I sincerely appreciate that. I saw this conversation with residents in action when they did some repaving and some work and some street sidewalk repair in my neighborhood last year. And I just want to applaud and thank the team. They worked very hard with the residents. They talked about options. They were out there walking the property saying, this is the situation. And so I just had the opportunity because it was sort of across the street from my house, and I am a tree hugger. So it was just a very well-done process, and I know it, I know it's worked, but I know what, how much the residents appreciate that. So I just want to say thank you for that and continued innovation and finding ways to preserve the trees. It's much appreciated by the residents I know, and I want to say thank you for that.
Any other comments? No? All right, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Resolution 28-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project. I want to do sit.
Our staff report is Erin Stanford. Thank you, Erin.
Good evening, members of council. The 2022 sanitary sewer lining repair project provides for over 44,000 linear feet of cured and placed pipe lining for sanitary sewer mains. This biennial program is funded from the 2022 through 2026 capital improvements program in the amount of $1.5 million for sanitary lining and repair. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for this program, and on May 25, 2022, four bids were received and publicly opened by engineering staff. Insituform Technologies submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $1,386,029.25. The work for this program will commence this year and will, with the contract execution, will run through April 28, 2023. Staff recommends council approve of the resolution, accepting the lowest and best bid of Insituform Technologies LLC in the amount of $1,386,029.25.
Thank you. Any public comment on this? None on a sewer lining, really? Counsel questions and discussion?
Hey, what's the life of relining the sewer?
Depending on the technologies that we use, we get at least 20 to 30 years once that's lined.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick note. It was actually nice to see that our estimate, these came, the one where it's $100,000 less than what we anticipated. So it's always good to see a bid come in lower than what we expected.
Yes, and this one, it's a little bit different because we have a budget, and what we adjust is the quantity. So that was really purposeful in there. We actually had 53,000 linear feet scheduled, and when we looked at the bids and the values, yeah, that's, so in this one, we work a little bit differently. But that was, yeah, on there, we had to purposely cut some of the quantities down to get under our budget.
Any other comments or questions? No? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Resolution 29-22.
Addressing the provisions of amended substitute House Bill 172 concerning the right of municipalities to retain the regulations and prohibitions on the possession, discharge, ignition, and exploding of fireworks that existed prior to the enactment of amended substitute House Bill 172. I want to do sit.
Thank you. Our staff report is from Chief Price. Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Resolution 2922 addresses the provisions of amended substitute House Bill 172 regarding the purchase and use of fireworks. On November 8 of 2021, Governor DeWine signed House Bill 172 into law. House Bill 172 goes into effect July 1 of this year. The House bill generally permits individuals in Ohio to purchase and discharge, ignite, or explode fireworks within the state. However, House Bill 172 also permits political subdivisions to prohibit the use of fireworks, regulate the timeframe between which fireworks may be used, regulate the days on which fireworks may be used, or regulate the use of fireworks through the enforcement of ordinances or resolutions that regulate noise, disturbance of the peace, or disorderly conduct. As council is aware, the city of Dublin previously enacted its own regulations regarding fireworks under Chapter 93 and Section 96.23 of the city code. Upon consultation with Washington Township Fire Chief Alec O'Connell and the Law Director, we have reached a consensus in the interest of safety to recommend that the city continue to prohibit the sale of fireworks by unlicensed entities as well as the discharge, ignition, or explosion of fireworks within the city. Resolution 2922 reaffirm, would reaffirm the city's intent to continue to enforce the current code provisions regarding fireworks. Staff recommends resolution, recommends approval of resolution 2922. I want to thank Chief O'Connell for being here tonight in support of the resolution, and Chief O'Connell and I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this? No public comment? Counsel, do we have any questions or discussions? Jenny, will you please?
Chief, do you anticipate any challenges with enforcement? I know that is a very tough thing to do because you would have to kind of be everywhere all the time.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any additional challenges. Obviously, we're continuing the ordinance as it is presently on the books. Certainly around the holidays, especially and particularly on the Fourth, we do our best to make sure that we are ensuring safety throughout the city. That is a heavy night for our officers to respond to and address all of the complaints that come in, but we certainly are focused on making sure it is as safe as possible as we can in the community, and enforcement is part of that when it becomes necessary to lean into enforcement as the resolution for response to those complaints.
Great, thank you.
Can I recognize anyone else to speak?
I have one question. So is there going to be some type of public awareness campaign with our information department just to remind people? Because they might have heard that the state allows it now, and I didn't know if we've anticipated doing that over the next few weeks as people get ready for the Fourth of July.
Yes, thank you for that question as well. We absolutely are working with communications and public information, too, and in partnership with Washington Township and their public information officer to get out information to make sure there is clarity within the community, especially since there was some change in law at the state level.
Any other comments? None? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you, Ara. The business tonight is South Franklin Street Improvements presentation, and our staff report is Brian Gabel.
Talking tonight on the Franklin Street Improvements, you'll remember we were here in February 14 of 2022 this year, and wanted to provide an update and further feedback on residents' feelings and meeting summaries. So our agenda tonight, we'll briefly touch over the project again, discuss the community input received, and provide staff recommendations on the improvements. So to go over the project overview briefly again, project involves reconstruction of Franklin Street. This is from Sales Alley, which is the first block south of Bridge Street, to Waterford Drive, which is the terminus of Franklin Street. Improvements include reconstruction of the roadway, sidewalk and ADA ramps, street trees. The utility burial project is actually in a related project separate from this one, which will occur prior to the street improvement project. That's part of the reason why the street reconstruction is necessitated. So project rationale is really a conglomerate of res servicing, maintenance, requests for pedestrian facility enhancements, and to also provide the utility burial project as well for improvements. So this is the project area. Again, Bridge Street's on the left of your screen here. Sales Alley is the initiation of this project, and it'll continue south all the way down to Waterford Drive to connect in from there with the pedestrian facilities and improvements. Overall project schedule, the design for the utility burial is ongoing. We are pretty far along with all three, four of the utilities in the area, and that is continuing to move forward. We expect agreements to also be coming to council here late this summer. The acquisition easements began in April 2022. We expect construction of the utility burial work over the winter of '22 into '23, and the electrical and communication conversions to happen in late spring, early summer 2023. The Franklin Street Improvements project by design is meant to follow right behind that project, so design is ongoing with that. And in March of '23 is when we expect to begin construction and to end construction 2023 next year. Just briefly, important to note, the Franklin Street Extension Project is also meant to coincide with this project's construction as well. And that'll construct Franklin Street north of Bridge Street all the way up to North Street. So the current roadway, as you can see here, if you went out and drove Franklin Street today, you'd see a variable width asphalt roadway with concrete curb and gutter, overhead utilities, and some of the street trees have also been pretty aggressively trimmed by AEP in order to ensure that the trees do not come into contact with their facilities. The roadway itself is 20 feet to 28 feet wide of paved asphalt, so that's to the edge of the curb itself. The, the street is 24 to 32 feet from, measured from back of curb to back of curb, which is probably the measurement you're more used to hearing in council meetings. There are no pedestrian facilities on the street, and there's on-street parking provided at both sides of the street throughout. AP has, maintains, and owns a few streetlights along the route. These are not spaced at any normal interval and typically came from requests by some of the residents in the past. And there's also street trees at various locations. A brief summary of the survey results from 2021, I'm sorry, from December of 2021. We had 20 respondents. 50% of those respondents voted for sidewalks. 80% of those who voted for sidewalks also voted for sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. 40% of the 20 respondents voted for on-street parking to remain on both sides of the roadway, and 80% of the 20 respondents voted for burial of the overhead utility lines. And we'll go into detail more on those here in a minute. So changes made from the first public involvement, moving into the second public meeting. The staff already moved the transformer locations to the rear of the properties wherever feasible. The roadway width was further reduced from the proposed 24 originally to a 20 or 22-foot wide roadway. Vehicular speeds, the roadway designs that we've, that we've brought forward are the best designs that we have to promote a self-enforcing roadway for vehicular speeds. Sidewalk locations, widths, and materials were adjusted and based on resident feedback as well. Tree lawn widths will, are adjusted based on roadway fit and overall sidewalk width, while still allowing enough width for street trees. And parking locations will be adjusted dependent upon the design alternative selected by the residents. So engineering staff presented two design options at the public meeting on April 20. Design option one included a 22-foot-wide asphalt roadway from Sales Alley to John Wright Lane, which includes on-street parking on both sides of the roadway, and a 20-foot-wide asphalt roadway from John Wright to Waterford Drive, and that would match the existing roadway width there. The only change there would be on-street parking would be only on the east side of that roadway. Roadway design option number two presented a consistent 20-foot-wide width from Sales Alley all the way to the south at Waterford Drive, with parking restricted simply to the east side of the roadway, and this is due to the fire hydrants located on the west side of the roadway. Common features of both design options included concrete curb and gutter, pedestrian walkway on both sides with options to the width or the specific material, and additional street trees at regular intervals. So here's a cross section of the selected roadway, as we'll see in just a moment. This has a 20-foot-wide asphalt roadway. Parking will be limited to the east side of the roadway due to the fire hydrants on the west, concrete curb and gutter, and a four-foot-wide brick sidewalk on both sides of the street. So moving on to community input. Our second project meeting was held on April 20, 2022. We had excellent resident response from the comment forms with 21 of the 25 addresses responding. Many, excuse me, many responses included written comments, which were noted in the comment form summary provided to council. Briefly going over the survey results from survey one, again, sidewalks, the majority of the residents, 10 of the 20 respondents, had voted for sidewalk. Eight had voted for sidewalk on both sides of that 10. And the last two questions on survey one was on-street parking. You can see that eight voted for remain as is with parking on both sides, and six would be the second, would, would voted for parking on one side of the street. And then again, a majority voted for the burial of the overhead utility lines. The second survey sent out following the second public meeting, our results were 12 residents or addresses responding for option two, which is the 20-foot-wide asphalt roadway with concrete curb and gutter on either side and parking restricted to the east side of the roadway. Regarding sidewalk material, 14 of the 21 respondents responded that they preferred the brick option over the concrete option. And regarding sidewalk width, 13 of the 21 respondents voted for a four-foot-wide sidewalk in lieu of a five-foot wide sidewalk. So moving on to staff recommendations. Staff is recommending a 20-foot-wide asphalt roadway with concrete curb and gutter, parking on the east side of the street, and an eight-foot tree lawn with street trees from Sales Alley all the way down to Waterford Drive. This option makes the roadway consistent in width from Sales Alley all the way to its terminus at Waterford. Staff continues to recommend the burial of the overhead utility lines with utility items moved to the rear of the properties wherever feasible. As for sidewalks, staff recommends installing a four-foot-wide brick sidewalk on both sides of the street, which aligns with the majority of resident feedback. Overall, this concludes the staff presentation, and I would like to defer to council discussion or public comment.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have public comment? Anyone speaking on this?
We do have a couple of individuals who have signed in, mayor. The first was Alan Zuter.
All right. Alan, if you'll just state your name and address for us. Welcome, Alan.
Yes, Alan Zuter, 80 Franklin Street. I just wanted to say I appreciate the effort that staff has put into and council has put into working with us on all of these improvements. It's been a long process, and there has not been a, you know, a unanimous agreement in the neighborhood, so we've worked through a lot of different options. But this is certainly a project that will be welcome for a number of us. And as the link us presentation noted earlier, it helps to fill the sidewalk gap right in the middle of downtown Dublin, and that with the sidewalks over to the post office area, even if it doesn't get to the post office, are very welcome and much appreciated. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
We have Aaron Franks have signed in.
Welcome. Name and address. Name and address.
Thank you. Great. I second what Alan said, and I very much appreciate all your effort that the city has put into this and what council is, the attention that they've provided this. I welcome the changes that are being presented this evening, and as Alan said, it's been a long process, but really appreciate everyone's patience and ability to receive information and, and work with the neighborhood. It's, I think it's going to be a valuable addition to the community, and I, and I thank everyone for that.
Just for the record, Aaron, would you mind giving us your name and address? Thank you.
Aaron Frank, 85 Franklin.
Thank you very much. Council, any, any, have some discussion on this? Any questions?
I just wanted to say thanks for the ADA compliant ramps as well. It's a tricky area to try to navigate if you have mobility issues, so that's really, really important as, as part of the sidewalk infrastructure, so I appreciate that.
I just had one question. So, you said there's a few streetlights. I'm assuming AEP has those mounted on their utility poles, which we're doing away with when we bury the lines. Was there any discussion about putting lights back up, or is AEP gonna continue to have light?
The lights are not planned to be replaced. In residential areas, we default to our dark skies policy, which does not install streetlights in residential areas.
Well, I absolutely want to thank staff and the neighborhood for the time and energy that you put into, into having the discussion and bringing your thoughts to council. I, I think it's been a very interesting conversation, and I think one that, that I know that the community in the Franklin Street area has, has been quite engaged in. And so, I, I just want to thank staff for all the, all the work and the time and the, and the survey results and the listening that you've done. I think it's gonna be a very great project. Alan, did you want to come back up to the microphone?
Question, what kind of trees would be used? Has that been decided?
No, that's further on in our process, so we'll work with, you know, actually Parks and Rec in our Streets Department, as well as Forestry, to determine the best approach for trees in the area. We may also have, if there are options, we'll probably also reach out to the residents again for additional feedback.
Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the staff rec, if there's no other, I want to be sure there's no other comments. I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendations regarding South Franklin Street improvements. May I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on other business is the waterways maintenance program, and our staff report is Aaron Stanford.
Thank you again, members of council. We're here tonight to bring back the waterways maintenance program and the recommendations from the Public Services Committee. Tonight, we'll give a brief overview of the program development, and we'll review the recommendations from the Public Service Committee. The City of Dublin values the environment and recognizes the importance of our water quality and stormwater conveyance capacity. The waterways maintenance program is developed to ensure that the waterways are kept clear of unnatural debris and blockages, that they maintain the conveyance capacity of the open water courses, especially in areas that have FEMA-designated floodway and floodplain, that they reduce and eliminate illicit discharges into city waterways, improve the natural riparian habitat that is part of the stream ecosystem, that improves and protects the water quality of the streams, and repair and restore areas of significant erosion along channels. Why is this important? Naturally, water is an important natural resource. It adds value to our properties and the community. It protects public safety through flood protection and water quality preservation. It helps preserve riparian and aquatic habitats, and the, and provides for protection of existing public infrastructure. So, let's start from the beginning, when we were developing this, this program. Through a competitive consultant selection process, EMHNT was the preferred consultant for the development of the waterways maintenance program. They began work on this program development in late 2021, and built upon waterway inspection data that was performed by Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District over the previous four years. Here are a few examples of deficiencies were identified through the inspections of the waterways. So, these are our actual locations that were identified through Franklin Soil and Water. The two you see above on the screen are examples of noted channel erosion locations. And of note on the right, you can see that's actually roof drains coming from a neighboring residence, so you can see how much erosion has happened over time. The, the second slide is going to illustrate channel or outflow blockages that were identified throughout the systems. So, these are gonna be a little more wide-ranging. You, you will see either localized outflows, so coming out of our conduit system blockages, or you'll see larger channel obstructions, so think about downed trees, debris, things that get into our natural streams. So, those, those photos are representing inspections that we located those areas. As part of their development, or one of the things that we asked our consultant EMHNT to do was to develop a GIS mapping tool, and this was invaluable in, in basically developing this program. Through this, this GIS mapping tool, which provided a link, and hopefully you were able to, to get in and, and kind of browse around in that, that tool, because it really is powerful. It maps all the points of inspection with linked data, including photos and graphs. So, when you look at each of those points that you can see on that map, you can click on each individual record of those inspections and see a photo of what it is that they noted in that program. Of those, they located all of the 535 original points. The other thing that they did was help sift through all of those points and identify which points of, of inspection or issue were located on city-owned property, or within easements that the city had a maintenance responsibility through an easement. Once that was done, they were able to provide groupings of points into program projects. So, they took the areas and points that they found on city-owned property and grouped them geographically, as you'll, you'll see later in the presentation, into individual projects that we could address later through the program. And the nice thing, the last thing I'll mention about this mapping tool is, is now that we have it, it's operational, it's running, it's something that can be updated as projects are completed, or new inspection points are discovered as we continue to move forward. This mapping exercise, along with the detailed plat, plan, and property records research, determined of the 535 total inspection points, 186 were located on city-owned property or within city responsible maintenance areas. Thirty-six of those sites were able to be removed from the program or reclassified based on additional site visits, where they verified there was no longer an issue, the issue had migrated, or they were listed as smaller dump sites, yard debris. An example would be like if they noted grass clippings that were placed in that area. Just some statistical information on that, of the, the 150 inspections locate, locations that were analyzed, it was pretty much a 50-50 split between channel blockages, which accounted for about 51%, and channel erosion, which is 49. So, once all the points were identified, graphed, entered into our system, the next step for our consultant was to develop an inspection scoring range. And what that was, the purpose of that was to give each of those points and help us prioritize the projects, or, or give it a, a ranking, so that we could start to address and program all of the projects that would come from, from the waterways maintenance program. The inspection scoring range for each of those individual points ranged between a score of six and 95. A higher score would indicate an increased threat to infrastructure due to erosion or flooding. And again, like we said, to begin with, the scores used, were used to assist the prioritization of maintenance activities. So, when you, if you would dive into their formulas, which I love to do, one of the things that they would put in there is a criticality factor. And one of the things that they would look at at each of the individual points, they would analyze, is there public infrastructure, an individual, private property? Were those, were there things that were at danger from erosion was a, was a great example? And if there was erosion that was happening along a public roadway, it would get a higher score, which would indicate to us and to the program that it needed to have a higher priority in being addressed. So, once we were able to whittle down the points that were in, on the publicly-owned properties or areas that we were to maintain, they were initially grouped into 59 different project areas. So, those were based on those 150 existing points that we looked at. Obviously, by grouping those points together, one of the things that helps, it reduces the cost for engineering, for permitting, for construction, and then it can be easily separated into debris removal and channel stabilization activities. Each of the projects were given their own score, again, for to help prioritize the project scoring, and they were based on the highest individual inspection point within the project grouping. Once all those projects were identified, listed, prioritized, the other piece of information that we need to do to help build this program and, and think about funding, was to get cost estimates for each of the individual projects, for each project that we had developed. An individual construction of probable cost was, was developed. Each of those projects, if you looked into your information, we did separate the costs for erosion, bank stabilization, debris removal costs. We'll talk a little bit about that more here in detail. There was a reason for that. But altogether, the total cost for, to address all of those points, and again, that was on public property or things that were within public easements, was a grand total of $1.75 million. The breakdown between the debris removal would be about $460,000 of that, 1.7, and then the bank stabilization or the erosion would be 1.29 million. So, from those 95 inspection locations, we whittled it, we were able to whittle it down to 39 different project areas. There was a way that we did that. So, once we had these all prioritized, we had that priority listing, the nice thing that we, we realized with, with the help, obviously, of, of various staff, was that as we looked further and further down on the priority list, what needed to be done, there became a point of that ranking where it was well-suited to be able to be addressed by city staff. So, what we did, we were able to pull out those, those areas of debris removal was common. Think about a localized obstruction at a grade, a safety grade on an outfall. Those were things we pulled out of the system and said, those are things that can be addressed by city staff. Those activities have actually already started to go, be performed. And when we were able to do that, we were not only able to remove inspection points and projects, but we were able to reduce costs. So, those were some of the things that we did. There was also, at the very low end of the erosion, there were areas that we identified that had a very low erosion score and had no threat to public infrastructure. So, think about in an open space in a park, where there was very minor erosion, nothing around that area was in danger. Those were ones that we identified as far as, you know, kind of prioritizing the program. We said, hey, these are areas that we know we're starting to see an issue, but let's monitor those, as, again, as we keep ongoing with this program, but let's focus on the areas that we need to address right now. You know, so straight, again, the channel maintenance activities we talk about, we're gonna break them down into bank stabilization and debris removal. You know, there's some reasons for each of those things. Obviously, infrastructure protection is under both of those. The bank stabilization has water quality improvements, so when you think about the reduction of silt and sediment loads into our waterways, it's important to be able to shore up those erosion areas. Debris removal, right, that, that relates directly back to flood protection, right? So, blockages, downed trees, removing those things, those unnatural obstructions, help us maintain those channel capacity areas and, and hopefully reduce the areas of flooding. So, the, the next part of the presentation, we want to talk a little bit more about the remaining points, right? So, the, the logical question that comes from everything we've talked about so far is, what about the other 349 points? And the graphic that, that we tried to put on this map on the right side, that's actually taking our GIS tool and filtering out everything that, that is city responsible. So, what you have left represents those points that are located on private property. Again, from those 535, 349 are located on privately-owned property. Waterways Maintenance Work Plan and Program Budget, what you guys have before you today and the budget that we worked up, we want to be very clear that it includes only points located on public property or within public easements. You know, working with our, our legal representation, the city does not have a legal obligation or responsibility to maintain these portions of the waterways. Talk a little bit more about private property. You know, when we look into other areas, the landowner has primary, primary authority and responsibility to clear blockages on private property. Current city code does not require the city to clear blockages on private property, although the city does have the ability, under certain circumstances, to require the owner to perform stream maintenance, and can also assess the cost of work back to the property owner if they refuse to pro, to perform the maintenance and, and the city has the work performed. So, from there, we're gonna talk a little bit more about the recommendations. And one, one thing I want to talk about just a little bit more in detail was the Public Services Committee meeting. It was a great discussion, probably one of the more pleasurable public meetings I've been to, and I've been to a few. I think we did have comments of the Public Service Committee, we actually had residents show up, and then there were some, there was some good discussion that came from that. There were some good points. There were, you know, I think they learned a lot about kind of where we're at and what we're working on in the point. But from that, one of the, the good suggestions that came out of that, that changed from what we had presented, was what we were asked to do was, we provided a single budget and a single programming for a five-year program level funded. And what we were asked to come back to the full council for consideration was, we were asked to get to perform some analysis and provide two, two, we provided three total, but two additional scenarios for funding and implementation. And what we heard at that meeting was, one of the things that, that we were asked to bring back was, could we front-load or accelerate the front end of that project and really kick it off and provide some more funding? So, what we've done is provide three different scenarios. So, the first scenario you see listed there, that is our original budgets we proposed, that we worked with our consultant. That is taking that $1.75 million total budget cost, level funding it over five, over five different years. So, that's why you'll see the total budget request remains level. There is a reason why, when we talked earlier, that we talked a little bit about separating the erosion, erosion and channel stabilization versus debris removal. The reason for that is, is that when we come back with budget requests, the CIP budget would, would fund the erosion and bank stabilization, since it would be new infrastructure. It's, you know, building upon our additional capital infrastructure. And then, the debris removal, which we feel, and I believe is, is much more of a maintenance activity, would come from an operating budget request. So, for each of those, each of those projects, we separated those costs between what the, the debris removal and the erosion budget would be, and that's why you see those split, and it varies from year to year, you can, you can see depending on the year. So, anywhere, when you can see on this list, the CIP budget requests, those would be directly related to erosion and, and bank stabilization projects. The operating budget would be debris removal. So, that was the first scenario. The second scenario is, what we came up with is a level-funded but a compressed program, so it's over a three-year time period. So, it was, okay, can we do the same projects, program? You can see the total cost is the same, but can we do it in a quicker manner? Can we accelerate the, the program and compress it into a three-year program? What you can see is, you know, obviously, what that does is, is the first three years, '23, '24, '25, it basically comes up with about, about $583,000 is the average. It's not perfectly average, because the project cost just doesn't, don't work out perfectly that way. But you can see in Scenario 2, it ranges anywhere from $540,000 for a low-budget request in '25 to $620,024 for a, for a high-budget request. And again, for each of those years, we, we broke out what those requests would be from our CIP budget and our operating budget. The last scenario, Scenario 3, was a five-year program, but what we did was, we accelerated some of the projects, the budget, the funding request in the first two years. So, you can see, you know, the first two years are heavily weighted, have a lot more funding requests, 540 the first year, 420, but from there, they continued to step down. So, that was the one that we tried to really hear about, you know, front-loading that and putting a little bit more work up front, and kind of seeing how that, that looked when we laid out all the costs in the requests. One thing we, we would like to mention is that the, the current program funding that we have approved right now moving forward, we have $100,000 program for 2024 and for 2026. So, we just wanted to highlight currently, that's what we have anticipated. And obviously, any of these requests and the direction that we would get from you tonight, we would bring forward as part of the CIP process and the project requests. You know, I can tell you, we've started those developments, the worksheets originally a few months ago. What we had to plug in there at the time is the Scenario 1, but we do have the ability to be able to change those and react to those things. But part of this would be, we're gonna take the recommendations, and that would be what we would bring forward as part of that CIP budget request, and recognize that any budget that, that we would request are gonna compete naturally with any of the other projects that are gonna be before you.
Thank you.
I want to bring attention to this slide, because, and, and honestly, this has changed since the packet material that you guys had seen before. Okay? So, we had further staff discussion, and one of the things that we talked about was, there is that big question of private property maintenance. And yes, we want to get direction on the public portion of our project, to, to get your recommendation, to get your guidance, to be able to start moving those things forward and getting those things moving. and getting those things moving forward, you know, as quickly as possible. But we don't want to ignore that there is that other policy issue that we do want to have those conversations. So one of the things that we talked about, that we kind of added to this slide versus what you guys had seen, was we wanted to give a value to those other points. You know, what, when we talk about the private property maintenance, what does that mean? So when we, you know, the best data that we have now, we took the number of points that we had, and we said it correlates to around $11,000 to $12,000 per point when we looked at what our total cost was. So we took that and applied that to the number of private points that we had to kind of, to be able to offer you like a magnitude of scale of what would it take, funding-wise, for the rest of everything that's out there? And roughly, that's going to be anywhere from low end of four to, it could be potentially approach $4 to $5 million. One of the things that we'd like to recommend is, part of EMH and T's analysis, when they went through and looked at, we talked about the criticality score, when we talked about the cost estimating, the one thing they did not do is, they did not go to the step of doing that for the private points, because what we want to do is, we want to develop what we want to do for our public program. One of the things that we would like to talk about is having EMH and T, now that they've built this framework, they've built the foundation for the formula, the spreadsheet analysis, now they can go with additional effort, but they have that framework to be able to do that same exercise and give us the same data for those private points if we would like. And then moving forward from there, one of the things that we know, I think, needs to happen is return to the Public Service Committee to discuss in more detail policy options as related to that private property maintenance, which will definitely come up, as we know, in discussion as we start to invest more, we start to get a lot more active in our activities in those areas. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions or have any comments that you guys would have for us tonight.
Thank you, Aaron. Did we have any public comment on this? No. Dana, did you want to say something? Were you? I thought I saw you.
No, I was going to mention about, we appreciate you're looking at, if you'll go back a slide, Aaron. You know, this was a focus of your preference. Bottom line is, do you want to go earlier or spread it out? We would all have a tendency, we want to attack this thing sooner rather than later, and the idea being, you know, we want to clean up the public situation before you would want to say to the private owners, hey, you know, we need your help and enforcement on this. And so, so we want to get a sense of this, but the point, and Aaron did make it, and that is, it's going to, we're going to kind of get a sense of your preference. We're going to take that and model it into all the other CIP requests that we're taking a look at and just see how that shakes out in terms of the budget. It may look a little different when we come back to you during CIP, but just trying to get an idea of your sense of urgency on that. You know, I take responsibility for the addition of the, of the next slide y'all didn't get because we do need to address the public policy of the private side of this and how you best want to approach that. So I just want to thank, too, the team for this effort. This has been a three-year-plus effort to try to get a handle on these waterways. And remember, these waterways change every time we get heavy rain, for the most part. So we're trying to keep up with a moving target and try to deal with that situation. So this is the first time we've tackled this, and it's very comprehensive, well-done, and I think we get a good sense of, fortunately or unfortunately, the order of magnitude that we've got to deal with here.
Aaron, what was the method of bank stabilization that you priced?
It was, it was a combination of rock channel protection that had a fabric underneath of it and then plantings on the top edge of the bank. They provided, actually, we have a standard detail that they gave for us to be able to use that we can, we can definitely share with you guys. One of the things that we looked at in some of those areas that we were noticing the erosion was, in the past, there were some areas that had already started to see stabilization projects. So some of those areas, that solution matched pretty closely what was in that area already.
I would think in some of those images, it looked like you might need rock cage stabilization. I don't know that you'll be able to achieve true stabilization with, you know, surface applications.
Right. And the gabion baskets are definitely an option, and we've used that. Bran Road's a great example that we have that area where we've used, and that is another tool that we can choose to use. As, and one of the things that will happen with this, as we get projects approved, there will be individual designs for each of those. So we'll have, that's, you know, that's our go-to answer. There are going to be context-sensitive solutions, just like you brought up, that we don't have enough room, that there's other things that we can do to be able to stabilize those areas.
Well, and they don't require really any maintenance, and, you know, it's a more, it's probably a bit more expensive on the upfront, but as Dana alluded to, you know, these waterways tend to move, but they don't move once you've put the rock cages in. That's where they'll be.
Yeah, and that is one thing on our site visits, we've made quite a few of that on Bran Road, but that is one thing that we've noticed, is how well those baskets have held up along Bran Road. It's, I mean, even, it is amazing how well they've held, they've held up over time.
Yeah, you just, you don't have issues with them. They don't go anywhere.
Other comments? Kathy?
Aaron, thank you. As a member of the Public Services Committee, I just would applaud the, as you said, the report and the presentation and the materials that EMH and T did were just really outstanding. I think that the committee thought the work, and I know it's a heavy, heavy lift, but so appreciate that. You know, from my perspective, as I look at this, I got to assume there's going to be some annual ongoing cost, regardless of whether we upfront it or whatever. One of the things we talked about in the committee, and I know you don't have time to cover everything tonight, was some, I kind of call it preventative work that you mentioned of planting of trees and things that will keep the deterioration, those big costs, down going forward. And so if there is some sort of version of scenario three that allows us to do some work and then get ahead of, get ahead of some of that work, I think it will pay dividends down the stream. So scenario two, I just think there will be ongoing costs, so that scenario doesn't feel as complete as scenario three or that type of thing, whereas we can, we can get a head start on some of the big areas, do some preventive and education, as we talked about. If, if it all works in the CIP, I think that would be an interesting thing to model, because as we talked about it, there's just a body of initial work that, that's just going to require some money, and we'll keep chasing that if we don't find a way to do that earlier. So that would be my thought, and again, my appreciation to the team for really outstanding work on this. Thank you.
I would just say my preference is to front-load it, so either get it done in the three years, so two or three. I just think they're just going to continue to get worse, so the sooner we can fix it, the better. And this isn't an aesthetics thing that we're just, you know, this is going to cost us more later, too. So I would say, if we have to move some money around to make this work, my preference would be to front-load this and make this work.
You know, I just want to say, oh, I just want to say thanks to the engineering firm because this is totally comprehensive and it took every creek in our city and did a really good analysis, you know, spotting long jams, spotting the erosion. It was really, really well-done. So, you know, I don't, I guess this is back to Dana in a way to see what kind of monies we might have for this, but, and then moving on to the, I guess, the faster we expedite the solution, the more we might be able to ask the, the public to clear up their problems. We'll really have, after, after, after a much more extensive report than we heard tonight, we're going to have some really great waterways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine?
Thanks. Yeah, I would tend to agree with John and Amy. I would prefer to accelerate the program. You know, it's a little difficult for us to ask our residents to clean up their stuff if we're not doing ours first. And I think that over the, that period of time, especially given where we are with the economy, it's going to end up costing us more to do it over five years than it is going to be to do it over three years. And this is really for the health and safety of our water. So I would prefer to go with the accelerated scenario myself.
I have a question for you, Aaron. I happen to have two creeks, one in front of my house and one on the other, and I have some of these issues. So one, I think I am for accelerating it also because I believe that if you clean up, if the city has the opportunity to stabilize some banks, to remove some debris, it will relieve some of the burden that happens to flow downstream to private properties. I think that's, that's one, one reason I'd like to see it accelerated, because it would reduce the amount of money that possibly private owners might have to pay if we, if we delay this too much longer. Secondly, was there any conversation in the study about placing boulders in areas where there's really strong erosion? Because in looking at my own property, and I have some erosion and trying to manage my creeks, I had Franklin County Extension come out and talk to me about it, and they said that when you have rapidly running water, especially coming around a curve that takes some of the land off, that if you place some large boulders in the waterway, you break up the force of the water and reduce the amount of erosion that can happen. Was that ever just, is that an option that you're looking at?
So that wasn't specifically discussed, and I think, I think what our consultant would say if they were here tonight, I think some of the hesitation with that or from their recommendation would be, if I'm picturing what you're requesting, you're talking about placing those actually in the stream to cut, as an energy dissipator. And I think some of that, they would have to weigh, and we would have to think about, that also becomes something that debris and other material can get hung up on. So it's a balance in those areas. It doesn't mean that that couldn't be a reasonable solution, but again, we'd have to look at those individually, like we have, context-sensitive with each of those areas. But I think in large part, it was stabilizing the actual bank and not necessarily trying to take the energy, because in a lot of these waterways, as you know, if we get heavy rain events like we've had earlier this year, there is a lot of power in those waterways. So when we developed those things, no, we did not pursue that option. I think that's in large part why it wasn't proposed, at least initially.
Right. I'm sure it's individual, and one of the things that I, that I know in trying some of this in my own, is that you certainly can't have very many of them, because you're right, it catches debris, but one large one will split the water and stop the spread of it to one. And then the other thing I wanted to ask you is, in bank stabilization, I know debris removal is really important, obviously, but in bank stabilization, if you were able to get the bank stabilized, plantings done early on at the very front end, my, my sense is that you can reduce also the flow of the water. In other words, the debris, is that the first thing you're going to do, or is debris the first, debris removal the first thing? Because you remove the debris, you speed the water, you increase the erosion. Do you stabilize first, or do you remove the debris? I'm just curious.
So the way they were grouped and organized and prioritized, they did neither, and here's why. When you look at those, the mapping and the grouping, you'll see most of those projects, and then we broke out the cost, they involve both types of activities in construction areas. And what we needed to be sensitive about was, one, the cost. I mean, it, you know, it is, it's an expensive program just to get this off, off the, the starting blocks, and if we were to separate those things and break those into that type of activity, because it is something we talked about, I mean, we thought about those things. But when you look at that area, there's a few things we thought about. One is, is the time it takes us to get to all those things, the increased cost. And the other thing that we wanted to be sensitive, as we thought about this program, is the disturbance to the neighbors, right, and to the property. We, as much as possible, we wanted to get in those areas and disturb them once, get done what we needed to do, whether it's debris removal, erosion, and then get out. The last thing that I didn't mention here, but we talked about extensively in other places, is the other requirement with some of the erosion at stream bank stabilization is there's EPA permitting requirements, environmental permitting, or Army Corps, excuse me. So some of those things play into what we need to do as far as permitting, timing, some of those things. So when we looked at those things, that's why we didn't separate those specifically, so we tried to group those together so that we could accomplish all those things that I just mentioned.
And my last comment is this, I think it's so very important, as you go through this process, the next three years, to really communicate the work that you're doing to the public, because, one, it's educational, it's also exemplary. It shows the public and others who live on the waterways what the city is doing and how you're doing it, and teaching us how to do it, so we can begin to do it. So, thank you. This is a fabulous waterway assessment. John, you had some comments?
Yeah, it's basically going to get down to, for the slope stabilization, ripraps and gabions, and that's it.
In large part, yes, I think that's what you're saying.
And the riprap's going to be a lot less expensive and maybe in certain areas, it'll be the preferred choice.
In large part, yes, I believe so.
Yeah. And then the size is really important because it has a lot to do with the aesthetic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Well, you need the recommendations. Dana, did you have something?
I was just going to say, we're just looking, I think what I'm hearing is a preference for more sooner than later.
Yeah.
I think we could probably take that away from this discussion. I don't think I really need a motion for that, because we're still going to have to go through a CIP process. That gives us good guidance on how to model that, so we appreciate that very much. I think I would ask, go, if you go to the next slide, Aaron, I think I would ask, I hope you don't feel like we're springing it on you, but I think it's almost just a natural follow-on. If you don't feel that way, just say so. I would almost ask that you go ahead and refer this private property consideration to your Public Service Committee as a follow-up, and we're also going to have to engage the consultant for a little more work on that, and that will have some costs, which we think we can cover in the existing budget. So would ask for a motion to refer that, so that we can just get that done and go straight to Public Service Committee.
Well, I think there is agreement that we will want to accelerate this. That's up to you to determine which way it's going to be, but at least an acceleration. So I will make a motion to accept the Public Services Committee recommendations regarding the waterways maintenance and the accelerated program. May I have a second?
I think we'd like to add to that motion that it would be referred back to the Public Services Committee.
I was going to, I thought that was a separate motion.
You can, you can certainly vote on that if you'd like. I didn't mean to jump ahead of you, Mayor, if you want to vote on that recommendation and, and more sooner than later. But I definitely like a separate motion on referring to Public Service Committee.
Separate motion, okay. All right, that's good. Okay.
I'll second the motion on the floor.
All right. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes. And I will make a motion to refer the private policy concerning water maintenance recommendations to go to the, the Public Services Committee. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call roll.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is Council Goal, and our staff report is Dana McDaniel.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. At your May 9, 2022 City Council meeting, council adopted four goals for 22, 2022 and 23. As a result, staff has provided in your packet memo both an update on certain goals and some, some suggested next steps for others. I'm requesting some guidance from you this evening regarding next steps, again, for certain of these, in order that staff start to put some actions into motion over the next few weeks. I'm not going to address the Performing Arts Center proposal this evening, as council-designated Councilmember Keeler has a lead on this project. Since he's not here this evening, I'll place it under other at your next meeting. Obviously, we could try to discuss that at your work session next Tuesday, June 21st, but that agenda's pretty full. I'm open to whatever you want to do, but I think we could try it, and if we can't get to it, then we could put it under other. So I'll just pencil under both and see, see where we get to, if that's all right with council. Moving on then, in regards to goal one, become the most connected community in the, in the U.S. As you know, we've already been working on this goal and are scheduled to discuss it next Tuesday, June 21st, at your work session. A few updates will be provided regarding, an update on the local fiber map development, information about an Innovation Day event that's being organized that will gather industry leaders and potential partners for discovery and preparation for future upcoming proposals, and that public-private partnership models are being evaluated for potential use by the program. I'm going to go as far as to say, too, you'll probably hear from us, although I didn't put in the memo that we're going to be proposing to put an RFP out on the street pretty quickly about fiber to the home, so we can start to gather some input from the industry. So I think those, that's not to give, not to give everything away for next week, there we just had the meeting, but that's, that'll give you some idea of what we're going to do next week. Again, I'm not seeking any guidance this evening on this goal unless there's something council would like to mention, or if you have any questions of me on that goal for tonight. Okay, moving on, in regards to goal two, build a Dublin 2035 visionary framework. We've already given you a written proposal to council that's also slated for discussion during next Tuesday's June 21st council work session. This proposal is focused on revising the city's vision statement for a Dublin 2035 for a Dublin 2035 strategic framework, and includes proposals for associated goals in support of the revised vision. Again, not really seeking any guidance on this one tonight, but if you have any, anything you'd like to mention or ask this evening, please let me know.
My only comment is, I think I mentioned this before, is in the visionary framework, and I think it's going to be included, is that we, we understand the community plan process and the, and the progress on that.
Yeah, in fact, we've asked Jenny to be prepared, or, or Homer on her behalf, if she's not going to be there to give an update on that. In regards to goal three, strengthen the stewardship and vitality of our historic district core, the April 18th work session provided City Council with background and additional information regarding the historic district discussion that occurred as part of council's retreat. The memo provided you in preparation for this meeting, provided a summary of work already completed towards this goal. And staff recommends the next step to be, to better understand how and whether the implementation of the new code and guidelines that were put in place for the historic district is meeting the expectation of City Council and a Dublin community. So in order to determine this, staff is recommending that we reengage a consultant, and namely, Greg Dale is, is who we're recommending. I think you all know Greg. That, and we used him throughout the recent code and guideline amendment process, so he's very knowledgeable of that. Secondly, the consultant meet with council members individually to identify the goals and challenges within the district and discuss their desired outcomes. And I think that would work well, given the discussion that you had at your work session, to have that dialogue like that. And of course, staff would attend that as well. And then following that, conduct an open house public meeting to gain additional input from Dublin residents relative to the actions that have been taken. Again, both the interviews and the public meeting would be facilitated by Greg Dale and include city development staff. Now, this input would allow staff to understand how the implementation of the new code and guidelines might be meeting the expectations. It might also be a little bit too early, but we don't really know that until we have some discussion about it. And we think this is a good next step, again, in the context of your previous discussion, having a little bit more dialogue this way as a, as a sort of a sanity check against those things we put into place. And then from there, you know, come back to you again, and then see if there's any recommendations out of that. So there's really a two-part question here. Is council agreeable to meeting individually? Are you okay with a public meeting? And are you okay, I guess the third question would be, are you okay with us engaging consultant, such as Greg, to, to help us with that?
Comments? I have one, and, and I just want to throw it out as a, as a question. I'm, I'm, I think this is a great idea. I like the idea of Greg Dale. I like the idea of having council interviews. I also love the, the idea of, of meeting with the public. I wonder if, instead of following the individual, following the interviews with the individual council members, whether a public meeting might occur first. And the reason I'm mentioning that is because I think that it's very difficult for us to understand the issues that may be occurring within the historic district with the public until we hear them. And then the opportunity to hear them and then have that one-on-one with Greg Dale might be more beneficial, instead of maybe not realizing what some of the issues might be, and presuming what they are. I just wonder if we might be able to engage the public meeting first and follow that.
Yeah, I, it was presented to me this way by staff in this order, but I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily a, you know, if there's any particular strategy in that. It's really your preference, just whatever you would prefer to do first.
There's been a, there's been a really large request to have a public meeting by the residents and, and some of the commercial people. And I, I think waiting for it might, they might be more amenable to, to having that conversation earlier than later, I guess I'd say. So I, I would like to make that recommendation that we have that public meeting before. And welcome any comments from council.
So I honestly think it's too early to reevaluate it. We just implemented the code. We haven't built a whole lot of things under the code. So in my personal opinion, we don't have enough new information to be asking people. I don't know what questions we would ask them. I mean, we extensively talked to the public and the businesses over and over for the past five years to get the new code written, to get the historic district task force done. So to me, I don't really support getting the facilitator back and asking them more questions. I think what we, I think we just need to, amongst council, you know, we've heard what the residents already have to say. We just need to pick a vision and figure it out. So in my opinion, I don't know what we would talk about. We've already talked about it for the last five years. And I just don't know that we have enough information. Our code's only been active for a year now.
You know, I, I get an awful lot of comments from the residents that there's confusion concerning how to interpret the code. I, I have had quite a few comments from, from like, all over the historic district, where they just want a sit and have a conversation. So, you know, I, I don't know what all the concerns are. I don't know what the suggestions might be. But I know that there's a request to have a public conversation. So that's the reason I bring it up.
I just, I understand that. But we could talk every day, all day long, for years. I mean, at some point, we just actually have to do. And I, it's just my two cents.
I mean, if it really is that unclear, then, you know, maybe staff can take those calls. You can forward those people to staff. And if they have questions and they feel it's unclear, maybe they can explain it to them. I don't know that us meeting and hearing them say that it's unclear is going to make it more clear. But to marry those people up, if there are questions with staff, so, so that they could actually get them answered. And I agree with Amy. I think the, I mean, we passed the code. We must have felt like it was pretty good. We worked on it for quite some time and we passed it. So, you know, I, I would agree. And if there is confusion, then hopefully staff could make that more clear as they come forward with applications.
You know, I, I don't know that it's just simply that. I think there's just a sentiment that they want to have conversation. And I do forward, when I do get requests from people with concerns, I do forward it to staff. I, you know, I think this, these recommendations are to, and I think Amy, you, you may have brought that up, about some of the concerns about, we need to make a decision on what it is we're preserving. So, so we want to make sure that you have the direction that you need when it comes to engaging Greg Dale to facilitate council interviews and a public meeting. So is there any other conversation about that? Because we want to be able to give you that direction.
Well, I guess, well, I'm not necessarily hearing clear direction. You want us to go ahead with, with an engagement. So I, I think staff, what, what they're saying, and I, and Megan and Jenny aren't here, but I'm not pinned in on them, but that's where I'm getting some, some recommendation on this from. But I, I do think, to, to Councilmember Cram's point, I do think that they do feel that there was a lot that went into the input on getting that code in place. The code hasn't been in place that long, I understand that. But given the discussion we had last time, you know, we either need to go back to engagement, or, as the direction the council's look, you know, we'll take into consideration what the last meeting was. And then you all want to just pick this topic up where we left off and see if we can't wrestle that to ground on the, on, on those issues that we discussed at the last work session. That's fine, too. I mean, this is a goal, and I want to make sure we're advancing the goal. I'm just asking how you, how you want to advance it. This was our, our best proposal and a next step, so.
Well, in my opinion, it's, it's, we need, we've heard what the public has to say. We have a new code. If there's, we need to decide amongst ourselves and work with staff to figure out what exactly we want to ensure that is, you know, what we're preserving or what we're doing. But we've, I think we've heard all the public comment, in my opinion. It's all out there with the task force and everything.
So I think you're really at, if I recall, you really had a discussion about preservation or, or not, or what to preserve or, or not. So that's a discussion
The contributing non-
That we could bring back to council. The other one could be, let the code lay for a while and see how it, how it works. Point's well taken about any confusion, or we'll, we'll work on that. And, and point well taken, too, about encouraging people to engage with staff in interpretation of the code and preparation for anything they may bring forward. You know, we just probably haven't had enough to really wrestle that through. So it could be, on that piece, wait six months, see what comes forward, see how it works. But on the other piece about preservation, you know, we, we will need more discussion about that. Or you can choose to, to wait on that, too. I, I just don't want you to think we're not working, working on the goal.
For me, the preservation piece was, we started that discussion of contributing, non-contributing. I think we need to finish that discussion. And then if we, if we say we're not following those, or we're leaning towards, we're not going to take the consultant's recommendations for contributing, non-contributing. If that's where we're leaning, then the next step, I think, is we just have to, you know, work with legal and staff to figure out, well, what does that mean for our code and the existing code we have? That's, to me, the outstanding issue, is the contributing, non-contributing piece, because then that goes with the demolition piece that might be causing confusion.
Yeah, I, I agree. I feel like the, the conversation wasn't finished. And we didn't quite end up landing where we needed to land, so that we know how it is we need to move forward. I'd really like to finish that conversation first, and maybe put this a little bit on hold until we kind of finish up that conversation. Because the, the first conversation could impact where we go here, since this is code-related. And I, and I, I think the point is well taken. We haven't really had a lot of time with, with the code changes that were made. I'd like to see how some of that ends up fleshing itself out in, in the interactions we have with, you know, folks from the public. So I'm all for continuing this conversation, but I'm not sure we've finished the prerequisite, if you will, to this conversation. So I'd like to focus energy there, so that we can move into this conversation.
So you're suggesting possibly having at, at a work session, finishing this, this conversation about preserving, what is to be preserved and
Yeah, we have to put it somewhere.
Contributing, non-contributing.
Yeah, we have to put it somewhere. Absolutely. Yeah. And, and it, it's, it is worthy of that kind of focus.
Mm-hmm. There is this underlying, there, there is a sentiment in the historic district among residents that, that I've spoken to, and I've spoken to a large majority, that needs to have a conversation. But I agree that I think that we can follow through with this, what is, what is worth preserving? Because there is an uncomfortableness, and I don't want to speak to them, but for the changes that have happened, there's confusion. I think it's, it's sort of like an opportunity to stop, take a look, for them to say, help us understand where you're going. That's, I think, what they are interested in. And they, and the code changes are confusing because they're new. And I understand it takes time. But there is a request by the residents to have conversation. I know this for a fact.
Okay. Well, and if you, if you feel that, that way, and you've heard that, you know, certainly, we don't want people to be out there confused or alone and afraid when it comes to this code. So, you know, there's nothing says we can't do some education sessions. We could certainly, I could certainly have the planning staff say, hey, you know, we're going to meet on a certain night, get in, you know, have an invitation out there. And if people want to come in and, and talk about the code and, and try to resolve any issues, concerns, or what have you, we'll certainly make ourselves available for that. So I would certainly offer that. That's something we probably should do anyway, is education. And it's not in the too hard column. So we can certainly promote that.
So in order to give you direction on this, I am hearing that we want to move forward with discuss, finishing the conversation concerning preservation, non-preservation, contributing, non-contributing, before we move on to advisory or facilitation by Greg Dale. Is that what I'm getting? So does that give you a sense of direction on that during a work session? Okay. Does that give you good direction? And do we want to, we don't want to meet ahead of time then, individually. Is that what we're saying? Ready to go with the work session and finish this conversation before we move on to a facilitator?
So, so, okay. So we will finish, we'll arrange for that conversation. And, and again, the education session piece, I'm just going to talk to planning staff about that, and if we can always put that out there. So, okay. Very good. I'll take that as direction then. And then in regards to goal four, develop Dublin's destination of choice, next generation community events vision. Let me set that up just a little bit. So some benchmarking and feasibility is ongoing. Reference ideas already under consideration for expanded events. And, you know, this, this lends itself to this, this goal of, it's kind of a new armed or economic development strategy about, you know, trying to, to consider the idea of expanded events as a part of an economic development strategy, frankly. So that kind of backs us into some of this other discussion we've had about managing events in downtown and that sort of thing, but even beyond downtown. So as we mentioned in the memo for this meeting, a downtown Dublin strategic alliance was formed in 2016, with the goal of positioning downtown Dublin as a world-class destination, attracting visitors and economic impact of the area. So the downtown alliance continues to collaborate. I don't know if you know that, on a monthly basis, they do get together, they talk about marketing, they talk about activities. But it probably hasn't realized its real potential. And therefore, and it's stated in the memo, staff's recommending initiating a strategic planning process with our existing partner agencies and private partners to assess at a higher level a few things. Identifying priorities, focusing energy and resources, strengthening operations, ensuring stakeholders are working toward common goals, and establishing whether the existing alliance can achieve intended outcomes. And it just, it doesn't have to be about downtown. It could be about the greater things that could go on in other parts of the city, because those partners are often are embedded in those efforts as well, namely, like Visit Dublin, or the Arts Council, or, or other partner agencies. The goal would be to harness the existing talents and resources of these organizations and staff, assess capabilities and gaps, and determine if alignment can be obtained among the partners to achieve city council's goal. So this process could also reveal what if other resources, which ties back into some of the other discussions we've had, you know, CICs and other things, the ways to manage these types of activities or efforts, be it resources or organizational needs that might be needed. So as the memo goes on to state, you know, given the complexity, the number of partners, the stakeholders, and all that you're trying to achieve, we think a good first step would be to have a facilitated conversation among our partners about that. Let's really circle the wagons around the downtown alliance, as we've called it, because it's all the same partners anyway, that we would do in this economic development strategy, if you want to look at it that way. And, and we would leverage some of the funding that you allocated earlier in the appropriation ordinance towards downtown, and somewhat towards this goal, and, and have a facilitated session with staff and those partners, report back the findings of that. Again, gaps, opportunities, resources, and so forth, as a next step towards this goal. I think we can get that done realistically by the end of third quarter, so that it could tie, obviously, into the appropriations you passed this evening, as well as any consideration for the operating budget going into the next year. So my recommendation, and what we're looking for is, do you support the recommendation to engage a facilitator to lead a strategic planning process with those partners? And are you supportive of involving the above referenced community partner organizations that we've talked about, and any others that we might identify that we could bring to, bring to the table for that discussion?
Conversation? Kevin?
I'm supportive of this. The only other addition that I might have, some resident involvement in this as well. I don't see that in this particular facet of that. And maybe that's sort of the phase two here. But to your point, the, the groups that will be representative are economic development focused. But this also has a community engagement, quality of life, live, work, play component to it. So somehow, we, we need to gather that as well, and rather, that's a step two or not. But to me, we need to have some resident engagement, whether they sit on this or they're part of the interview. I know we have some survey results that are going to
Yeah, I was just going to mention, we'll have some of that, we should have. Actually, that, that's in, but we're getting a first look at that data result. I would call that a close Phase 1A.
Okay.
I would do the internal one first, but certainly want to include the more, you know, the general public about, about that. And I think we would tee that up better once we know this data as well.
Yeah, because I think the groups that you have, and I see the schools as well, really do encapsulate sort of the economic development, that sort of thing. But I think we need to, to add that as well. So if that's an A, I, I concur with this. Do you have a facilitator in mind?
No, not yet. Christina?
Yeah, I, thanks. I, I'm supportive of the way that you've outlined this here, as far as any additional groups. You might consider someone from one of the diversity and inclusion groups as well, in, in on this, too.
Great point.
I just had a question. So is the city, do we have a representative from the city on this downtown Dublin?
We do.
Group? Group, we do? Okay. They weren't listed there, and I was like, how are we not included? Thanks.
I concur with Councilman Alito. I think having leadership from the kayak group, because I think the opportunity to incorporate diversity in our event programming would be really well-received by our community. So I would, I agree with that.
You know, I thank you for that. And I think, too, given that we're doing the Parks Master Plan process, and I know some of this, I could see some interconnection with that, and it could be, to your question about facilitator, just kind of dawned on me, too, that that individual might be a good one, that consultant, to include along with some other facilitation so that we're merging all these inputs that we're getting from these different processes together in here.
Yeah, because I also, not just from an inclusion perspective, as sort of traditionally defined, but I also want to make sure that we have an eye to disability access. I've definitely received some comments over time that some of the community events that we put on aren't always the most disability access-friendly. So when I say inclusion, I mean all of it.
Okay.
Actually, Dana, you brought up a good point. We had the consultant that's doing the Parks Master Plan at Public Services this week, and I think a lot of this is going to overlap with the surveys that he's doing. So I think we're going to have a lot of survey data from that that we can use.
Okay.
All right, so we want to be able to give you the direction you need. So does council support the staff's recommendation to engage a facilitator to lead the strategic planning process? Yes, I think you have that. And then is council supportive of involving the above referenced community with the partner organizations, with the inclusion of some resident input and diversity leadership? Would that be a fair, so where we're going with that? Let you choose.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for the direction on these. And again, these aren't the end-all-be-all, these are the next steps, and we'll report back and keep you up to date on how those are progressing so we can get these goals going. Thank you very much.
And Dana, you have some comments, further comments?
Actually, I've got quite a few.
Okay.
And I know it's getting late, but bear with me here, so.
You go for it.
I don't normally make this many, but I'm going to make them tonight.
You're good, you go for it.
So a few items here. The Art in Public Places meeting referenced the Boat and the Field project to be located at ML Red Trabu Nature Preserve. This public meeting will be held Saturday, June 25, 10:00 a.m. in council chambers. I just want to lift up Matt Stifler and his team for the GFOA award for the Public Annual Financial Report, or the PAFR, it's called. And that award was for 2020. Those kind of happen in arrears, but I want to congratulate Matt and his team. Not easy to get those GFOA awards. We seem to get them routinely, but to Team Finance and everyone who supports them, I want to congratulate them. Also, I want to lift up our Public Works team. We did have a Public Works Week celebration a few weeks ago, and I just didn't want to forget them, and just express my appreciation for all the great work that they do. We're making addition to the Go Dublin app. It's called, it's a Tell Dublin button. There'll be information in my City Manager update tomorrow about that, and that's where the general public can do a contact council or other city leadership in offices on concerns issues, kind of like you do at Contact Dublin City Council or Contact City Manager. They can now use that app to do that, which I think will be very efficient. Again, the work session next week, Tuesday, June 21, we'll be talking about the Most Connected, the Strategic Framework, and advancing council ideas. If we have time, we'll try to address the Performing Arts Center discussion. The housing strategy update was to be given at a previous work session that we canceled. I just want to assure you that we're still working with that consultant to try to get them back into town. Probably will take, probably take advantage of one of your CIP work sessions or a piece of that to get that done. I'm estimating that it's probably going to be, at the earliest, it's going to be in August that we're able to get that done. So we're working to get them back in, back in. CIP, the five-year CIP, we're in the process of working that at staff level. I would ask council that if you have any thoughts, ideas, suggestions, things that are on your mind regarding the CIP, feel free to shoot me an email on that. I'll get that distributed to the rec staff to take a look at it. Also, I want to announce the Citizen Jump Start. This is Citizen U for high school sophomores, juniors, and seniors. It's going to start the week of July 11. It'll have a class of up to 20 people. And then the State Capitol Budget, I think I sent you all an email, where the Harris-Brown Cemetery was approved for $450,000. Now, whether we get all $450,000, as you have to be seen, that's been arguable, but we'll try to get every bit of that that we can get. Also, just mention that the Mirrorfield Association received an additional $100,000 to the previous $75,000 from the State Capitol Budget for artwork. Matt Erman is our liaison to them. I want to say thanks to the Memorial Tournament staff and our staff for just a great memorial tournament. I think it turned out great. Couldn't have had better weather. You all know the story, and I'm sure you all will mention that at Roundtable. Excuse me, I couldn't help but mention this one tonight. I don't know if you saw, it's been on the news all day today about Abby Steiner, who we've celebrated in here, and her great showing in competition in track and field. And since Molly Steiner is our employee, I just wanted to lift her up and congratulate her. It's been all over the news, and what a great comeback win she had in her race. If you haven't had a chance to see that, you got to watch it. It's very inspiring. Given that we are under excessive heat warning the rest of the week, I don't know if you saw that came out today, we are going to keep the DCRC available as a cooling station. We've had lessons learned in the past where some people lose electricity. I hope that doesn't happen. Of course, that's on the heel of storms tonight as well and tomorrow. Hopefully, we don't have any of that issue, but just want the public to know that if you have an outage or something, or your air conditioner goes out, we're going to make the rec center available, and hopefully, we don't have any power issues and we can keep it cool. So please know that it's open. And also, I think she's here, she didn't choose, so is Jeannie still here? So I just want to congratulate Jeannie on being named as our new Director of Mobility. I think you know Jeannie has spent a lot of years in this space. She is a go-to person in the region, and I believe at Morpsey and the like, where she's put in many years of service in transportation and transportation engineering, and she's very tied into a lot of the regional efforts and a lot of institutional knowledge. So I just want to congratulate her on that appointment. And other than any questions you have, that's my list. Thank you.
Thank you. On to council reports. Our committee reports, Administrative Committee, Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Thank you. Yeah, I do have a couple things tonight. The Administrative Committee met on June the 7th. We had three topics. One of those was the council retreat topic of moving council initiatives forward. The group has worked with our retreat facilitator and has a proposal for consideration that will bring to an upcoming workshop for full council discussion and advancement. Secondly, we got a very nice, extensive HR benefits update, as we do every year, from Director Migliotti about changes. As we all know, the COVID work-from-home work styles, benefits cost, et cetera, have really been significant over the last year, and we got a very thorough and excellent report. There's some wonderful statistics that are available to us, and I forget the name of our tool all the time, help me, help me. Thank you, Claire Pointe. When those notes come out, I would encourage council to take a few minutes to look at those. We will certainly have a conversation, again, about that later this year, but a lot of really good information was shared, and so we'll make sure that those are available to you. And finally, for discussion this evening, I sent a note earlier that the CPI team would like some feedback from us this evening regarding our thoughts. They have shared with us before the work on the Link Ahead podcast and the discussion of including council members in some of those podcasts. So before you tonight are some considerations. A policy was put forward. We need to agree or modify tonight, and the long and the short of that policy is to make an offer for each individual council member, should they wish to, to participate in a podcast over the next year, and I would say, you know, the next calendar year, because just sort of a timing perspective. I would like to see council by show of sort of nods if they agree with that or have some changes to that policy. Is that agreeable? Yes, okay, so staff has that direction. We'll go ahead and move that. And the second thing is, also in your board pack, there were materials by the CPI team as to suggested topics for some of those podcasts. This came up at our work session, we provided some feedback, and those were incorporated in what you saw forward. We don't need to have necessarily a consensus tonight, but if there are other topics that you would like to see added to the list, CPI is just looking for this, the team, so that they can do this when we're off on holiday and begin to work. So if you've had a chance to look at that for this evening, are there any additions or topics that you would like to add to that list?
I don't have any, but are you open to suggestions if we come up with some thoughts that we could just spin by you?
We absolutely are, and I wanted to point out that in the process, it mentions that topics will be determined collaboratively with staff and each individual member, so we're absolutely open to your feedback.
Great, okay. Lindsay, do you have what you need to move ahead? Great, thank you very much. That's the end of my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development Committee?
See the Community Development Committee on the 21st next week. Be there.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Councilman Alito?
Yeah, we meet on the 23rd.
All right. Public Services Committee, Councilman Cram?
We had our meeting last weekend. It was the Parks Master Plan. We met with the consultant. He was, just gave us an update on the process and the questionnaires and the surveys that are going to be going out. He asked some of our input of some of the same questions, we'll be doing the surveys. He's going to ask, eventually get to the rest of council as well. But I was pretty impressed. He seemed to have lots of good ideas and understand the direction we wanted to go. We'll get updates as they move along in the survey process.
Memorial Day report.
Yeah, I just wanted to start out by saying the weather was fantastic, and I want to thank Colonel Noble and the Veterans Committee and the city staff for giving up the Memorial Day, especially Lori Getchell and Allison Mulroy. The program featured two wonderful speakers. First was a young lady who was a West Point graduate, helicopter pilot, member of the 82nd Airborne, had three children, was in Afghanistan. She gave a very inspirational talk. If any of you were lucky enough to hear her, that's her in the center picture right there. The second speaker, which is to the right, was a young lady who was from a Gold Star family, whose brother was killed in Afghanistan in '09. She told the spiritual development of the family that came from his death. He left the family a wonderful gift. This was followed by a really fantastic old-fashioned picnic in the grass. Got to love the city of Dublin. 400 people showed up. I thought, boy, we're going to run out of food, but I think we're down to about 12 to 15 chickens, and we made it. So just the, and the weather, as I said earlier, it was just really beautiful and just good to see the kind of family-togetherness that our city creates in these kind of things. So very moving, very wonderful experience, I think, for everybody who attended.
Thank you. It was a wonderful event, and Jean Bostick, he walked the entire route, and he was determined to walk the entire route. It was wonderful.
Also, yeah, just want to say there is a, for veterans and friends, at the Scioto Reserve Country Club is another meeting at 6:30 tomorrow night. And just an offshoot that, if you want to see a very interesting movie, go see Top Gun Maverick, as a final thought. Militarily, that exercise wouldn't have been executed that way, but it made for a really good plot, and I think you'll all enjoy it.
All right, Council Roundtable. Councilman Cram, would you like to start?
Sure. First, I just want to pass along thank you to the staff who worked the tournament, from our shuttle drivers to the staff at the villa. I received numerous compliments from guests that attended and had a wonderful time and very appreciative that they were allowed to come out. So, and they all, so the food was great, the hospitality was great, everyone was very nice. And I'm trying to think what else has gone on this week. I probably had something else, but I've forgotten. It's getting late.
Ditto on the Memorial Tournament and all the effort everybody put in it. And tomorrow night at 4:15 is My Sodom Sweet Beauty Salon ribbon cutting, so any of you that'd like to attend, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Christina?
Thanks. Yeah, thank you to all the staff and to the tournament for an amazing tournament, and somehow, I think, the weather turned out better than I've ever remembered it being. A quick congratulation to all of our Dublin graduates this year. We've had a couple. Amy had one. I had two graduates this year. Off to awesome things. Congrats, Matt, on the GFOA award. I know that a lot of people don't raise that up, but I think it's very exciting. So well, well done. Really appreciate it. And thank you, Dana, for the Go Dublin comment app. I know that's something that we've talked about, and I'm really excited that that button's going to be on that app, because I tell everyone I know who asks me questions about, hey, how can I get the police out here for speeders? Or how can I do this? Or I'm like, Go Dublin app. So I tout it all the time. So thank you for that. That's it.
I'd just like to mention that I did have an Information Technology and Communication Committee meeting with the National League of Cities on the 8th, and I did get appointed to the Policy Draft Subcommittee. So we will be working in the federal space to try to protect those information, communications and technology interests that we hold so dear. So looking forward to that work. Wanted to mention that the NARC Conference is in town this week. It's the National Association of Regional Councils, and Morpsey is the host. They've had some great speakers down at the Convention Center. And then finally, want to mention that we had a Workforce Development Industry Sector Meeting this morning, where we had the superintendents of Arlington, Hilliard, Marysville, Columbus, Dublin, Tolles, and Worthington, and they were joined by their Directors of Innovation, and we had a really wonderful conversation on what the future of perhaps a non-traditional four-year education might be, identifying pathways into the workforce, and capturing those that perhaps set out to go to a traditional four-year college, and that, and it was determined that might not be the best route for them. So that work is continuing. I think our next steps will probably to meet with some private industry sector folks, and I'm hopeful, it looks like we may be eligible for some funding from the Lieutenant Governor to more formalize that group and the work that would happen there. And that's all I have. Just thanks to Dan Sullivan, Chris Stifler, and everyone at the Memorial Tournament. You know, there's no way we could buy the kind of pub that we get that week. It just isn't for sale. And I just appreciate their efforts that put Dublin on the map globally as just a beautiful place to be, where there's a lot of fun things to do. So I appreciate all their efforts.
Kathy?
Thank you. Congratulations, Jeannie, or my condolences, I don't know, you decide. There you go. But I appreciate all of your hard work, and I know it's, you heard tonight what mobility is going to look like in the future, and it's going to be amazing, and so we appreciate you and thank you for that. And congratulations, Matt, on your award. I can't profess to understand it, but it impresses me very much, so thank you for your continued work there. The Memorial Tournament was great, and it just reminds me that not only how great the staff is, but they work pretty much every holiday. I think about that, whether it's Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, or whatever, and why we're appreciating everything, you're doing a lot of work. And so just want to say thank you very much for that, and we recognize it and we appreciate that. So thank you.
Well, I won't keep anyone much longer because this is way past the limit that I've allowed myself in most meetings. But quickly, I want to thank, well, the Memorial Tournament and all the staff. You all worked so very hard, and I don't know how you kept the hours that you did. But I will tell you that the Irish Ambassador to the United States, Daniel Muhall, was quite impressed with everyone. And we want to thank Ian over at Fido's Pub because he put on a wonderful hospitality event for everyone, and the ambassador told me that he thought that the Irish dancers here were as good, if not better, than what he's seen in Ireland. So please, please know that you put on a beautiful event. I had the opportunity to visit... the opportunity to visit TS Tech, which is an automotive manufacturing company out in Reynoldsburg. I was invited there, and I took a member of, I took Jenna from Economic Development and Kirby Went. And we saw an unbelievable automotive plant that they invited us to through JASCO. And they would be very interested, they are very interested in participating in a conversation about workforce development. So if you're looking for some private partnerships, they are like the third-largest manufacturing group in the state. So they, so we were going to connect them with some numbers and some people, so I can talk to you about that, Chris. And then Kathy and I had the opportunity to attend the Columbus Metropolitan Club's luncheon, which was sponsored by Keeler &amp; Nadler. That, the speakers were the four CEOs from the four major hospitals that find themselves here in Dublin. So we had an opportunity to sit at the speaker's table, have conversation with them, listen to their wonderful conversation about collaboration and partnership and community health. And I know that Molly Steiner is working so hard on community health, and it gave us a nice window to understand their thinking. And then attending the Pride Walk last evening was wonderful, and I would just encourage all of us to try to attend the Juneteenth Pride Walk, Juneteenth event as well. So other than that, I have one, one celebration. We have a birthday coming up, so Councilwoman Aludo is having a birthday in two days. So happy birthday from all of us. And that is the end of our meeting this evening, so we are adjourned.